I'd also just like to add, as always, on the second Saturday of the month, which this month is Saturday, November 12th, the Milwaukee Parks Foundation and Wetlands Conservancy will be working in Minthorne Springs, removing invasive plants and trying to create a better habitat for the birds and frogs and turtles and everything else that live there. So come out and join us between 10:00 and 12:00 on Saturday, the 12th.
I have one thing I'd like to add. If you lived in the area where Precision Cast Parts had their settlement, you should be getting a check soon. So I know people asked about that last time, so I got a check.
And I have one final one. We are expecting, not expecting, it is looking like the weather may lead to some flooding.
They knew what?
Flood. There may be flooding next week. The rains have come. That's, this is a normal part of being in Oregon. And so I just wanted the public, anyone who may be watching, we do have sandbags that'll be available at Public Works for individuals who may have moved here recently and not know that that's a service the city provides. So if you are worried, please stop by Public Works and we can help you out. Thanks.
Are you sure you don't have anything? The only one up here that didn't have something. All right. Our next item is Veterans Day Proclamation, and this will be presented by our old friend, American Legion, Jerry Craig.
Guess I should take my hat off so you can see my rare hair.
What's left of it.
It looks like you recently got a haircut. It looks nice.
She does a really good job. She always tells everybody she cuts my hair, so she can buy another pair of flip flops. So you want me to read this now that you've done all that talking?
You can if you would like to.
It's up to you. Scott's the leader.
Jerry, is there anything you want to let us know about what's going on at the Post or any?
Sure, I can talk about that first. If you do not know, we have changed commanders after six years. We're actually bringing back all the events that we've done in the past, whether it be Taco Tuesdays, dinners, breakfast. We're always open to the public. One of the big things we're having this 11th of November is we're actually bringing the American Legion Band Concert Band back to the Post. These members come from all over the state of Oregon and Washington, and they go from one place to the next if they can find a parking place. That's kind of a tough deal. Anyway, so thank God Waldorf is not having school that day, so we can have more parking. And then we're trying to work with Scott, you and the concert for anything you want to do. And we have March 29th as the Return to Veterans Day. And I'm assuming we're going to have a Poppy's Day and that type of thing. My wife has already made an advance call that you will all get Poppy's and American flag, whether she dies or not. That's how she works. Anyway, so there's many other things that we've got. I think Scott sent around the new newsletter. That's in the process of getting back to its normal standard. Basically, the command staff and most of the volunteers, volunteers have changed. So they're learning this and learning that and stepping up. And I'm still doing my PR with all the veterans organizations in this area and within the Portland city limits. I just kind of step back as the chaplain of the Post, but I'm also a chaplain for several organizations. The one thing that we have done, which I don't know that I've said anything to, is that 5 June of 2021, the Honor Guard stepped up to do funerals at Willamette National in the VA cutting funds. And we did that for a whole year and did 421 funerals. I did 300 medals up there. We've now stepped back because they got more money than we had to step forward again because the honor guards that are sent from the Marine Corps and Coast Guard, they don't bring enough people to shoot volleys, so we're doing the volleys as best we can. If families call us in particular and ask for us, then we will do whatever they want to do. And we're already at 159 since June 6th of this year. So we get a lot of support from Post, other than people wanting to step up and put an uniform on. But I'm elated and proud of the Post for the members that have. And they provide quite a bit of support for veterans within this community who step up and say they need some help, whether it's fixing a wall or new porch or whatever the case may be. And I'm really proud of those guys too. But we just continue to grow back from pandemic. And whereas I told a couple in here, we're now at 615 strength. We're the highest amount of people within a post within the state of Oregon. I'm kind of proud of that. There's different reasons for that, but I don't know. I keep saying to myself, what am I going to do with 600 people if they all show up at one time? It's not going to happen, but because they're strung out from here to there. But we're growing and getting back to where we were six years ago and doing things we should be doing. This approach I can take.
I just want to say thank you to Post 180 and Jerry for continuing the conversation, the dialogue with the city. We heard at the work session this afternoon, an update on the Veterans Monument at Scott Park, and I appreciate the conversation we continue to have with you folks. And we look forward to working with them again in 2023. The Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day is March 29th, and you'll be hearing more about programming for that. So thank you, Jerry, and thank you to your colleagues at the Post.
Appreciate that. So now that I'm horse, City of Milwaukee Proclamation. Whereas the United States first proclaimed November 11th, 1919, as armistice day to mark the end of World War I and the war to end all wars. I have to sticker that sometimes. And solemnly reflect on the horrific consequences of all wars. And whereas since 1990, 1919, the 11th day of the 11th month has come to be a time to recognize the contributions made by millions of men and women who answered our nation's call to arms in the pursuit of world peace. And whereas Veterans Day brings communities together to honor military veterans and their legacy of selflessness, services, sacrifice, and to remember the millions of citizens and military personnel who have died and been injured by war. And whereas the United States Department of Defense recognizes that the risk of future wars will be greatly increased by climate chaos and the resulting forced migration.
She does a really good job. She always tells everybody she cuts my hair, so she can buy another pair of flip flops. So you want me to read this now that you've done all that talking?
You can if you would like to, or?
It's up to you. Scott's the leader.
Jerry, is there anything you want to let us know about what's going on at the Post or any?
Sure, I can talk about that first. If you do not know, we've changed commanders after six years. We're actually bringing back all the events that we've done in the past, whether it be Taco Tuesdays, dinners, breakfast. We're always open to the public. One of the big things we're having this 11th of November is we're actually bringing the American Legion Band Concert Band back to the Post. These members come from all over the state of Oregon and Washington, and they go from one place to the next if they can find a parking place. That's kind of a tough deal. Anyway, so thank God Waldorf is not having school that day, so we can have more parking. And then we're trying to work with Scott, you and the concert for anything you want to do. And we have March 29th as the Return to Veterans Day. And I'm assuming we're gonna have a Poppy's Day and that type of thing. My wife has already made an advance call that you will all get Poppy's and American flag, whether it's she dies or not. That's how she works. Anyway, so there's many other things that we've got. I think Scott sent around the new newsletter. That's in the process of getting back to its normal standard. Basically, the command staff and most of the volunteers, volunteers have changed, so they're learning this and learning that and stepping up. And I'm still doing my PR with all the veterans organizations in this area and within the Portland City Limits. I just kind of step back as the chaplain of the Post, but I'm also a chaplain for several organizations. The one thing that we have done, which I don't know that I've said anything to, is that 5 June of 2021, the Honor Guard stepped up to do funerals at Willamette National in the VA Cut and Funds. And we've, we're doing, we did that for a whole year and did 421 funerals. I did 300 medals up there. We've now stepped back because they got more money than we had to step forward again because the Honor Guards that are sent from the Marine Corps and Coast Guard, they don't bring enough people to shoot volleys, so we're doing the volleys as best we can. And if families call us in particular and ask for us, then we will do whatever they want to do. And we're already at 159 for, since June 6th of this year. So we get a lot of support from Post, other than people wanting to step up and put an uniform on. But I'm elated and proud of the Post for the members that have, and they provide quite a bit of support for veterans within this community who step up and say they need some help, whether it's fixing a wall or new porch or whatever the case may be. And I'm really proud of those guys, too. But we just continue to grow back from pandemic. And whereas I told a couple in here, we're now 615 strength. We're the highest amount of people within a Post within the state of Oregon.
Wow.
Kind of proud of that. There's different reasons for that, but I don't know, I was, I keep saying to myself, what am I gonna do with 600 people if they all show up at one time? It's not gonna happen, but because they're strung out from here to there. But we're growing and getting back to where we were six years ago and doing things we should be doing. This approach I can take.
I just want to say thank you to Post 180 and Jerry for continuing the conversation, the dialogue with the city. We heard at the work session this afternoon, an update on the veterans monument at Scott Park, and I appreciate the conversation we continue to have with you folks. And we look forward to working with them again in 2023. The Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day is March 29th, and you'll be hearing more about programming for that. So thank you, Jerry, and thank you to your colleagues at the Post.
Appreciate that. So, now that I'm horse, City of Milwaukee Proclamation. Whereas the United States first proclaimed November 11th, 1919, as armistice day to mark the end of World War I and the war of, to end all wars, I have to stick her at that sometimes, and solemnly reflect on the horrific consequences of all wars. And whereas since 1990, 1919, the 11th day of the 11th month has come to be a time to recognize the contributions made by millions of men and women who answered our nation's call to arms in the pursuit of world peace. And whereas Veterans Day brings communities together to honor military veterans and their legacy of selflessness, services, sacrifice, and to remember the millions of citizens and military personnel who have died and been injured by war. And whereas the United States Department of Defense recognizes that the risk of future wars will be greatly increased by climate, climate chaos and the resulting forced migrations due to devastating starvations, inundations, fires, flooding, drought, and we do everything necessary to decrease these effects. And whereas the City of Milwaukee has been proud to partner with the American Legion Post 180 and the Susanna Lee Barlow chapter of the Daughters of American Revolution to recognize and honor veterans in the community who did not come home. And whereas the City of Milwaukee recognizes the sacrifices made by those who served our country so that we may pursue life, liberty, and happiness. Next paragraph's yours.
Sure, I'll take it. Now, therefore, I mark Gamba, Mayor of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the County of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2022, to be Veterans Day in the City of Milwaukee.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thanks to everybody. All right.
This is the part of the agenda during which council hear community members' comments regarding city business. For those in person who wish to speak, please submit a yellow comment card found on the table just outside of the door. If you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand reaction to alert staff you wish to speak. And when instructed to begin, click the microphone option to unmute yourself. If you're calling in through Zoom and would like to make a comment, dial *9 to raise your hand. You may also submit a comment via email to ocr@milwaukieoregon.gov. Before you make your comments, please state your name and city of residence for the record. If you would like the city to follow up with you, please submit your contact information to ocr@milwaukieoregon.gov. As council has other business items on the agenda this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because information provided during the community comments may be new, the city manager will respond at the next council meeting to those comments that require any follow-up. Before we begin, is there any follow-up from the October 18th community comments? Is it over?
There were no comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we received several comment cards. So far, they're all for the new building energy topic. And one hand was just raised in the chat, and I see it's Ashley Height. So, and I don't know what Ashley wants to talk about, but I'm gonna... Ashley, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, and is your topic not related to the building energy climate?
No, it is.
It is? Okay.
Yeah.
Then we'll probably ask you to wait then till later during that part of the meeting? Okay.
Thank you.
Other than that, Mr. Mayor, I see another hand raised.
Okay. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the city council for October 4th, 2022, a work session, and October 4th, 2022, a regular session. It includes a resolution appointing Mary Ruth Storer to the library board. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
No. I'll move to approve the consent agenda as written.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. It passes unanimously. All right, Brett. Next item is the annexation of 5731 Southeast Laurel Street. It's an ordinance, and it will be presented by our senior planner, Brett Kelver.
Good evening, Mayor Gamba. Counselors, Brett Kelver, senior planner with the city's planning office. Good to see you all in person. Here tonight for a fairly cursory, I think, and regular expedited annexation of another property in the city. This is in the city's northeast sewer extension area. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation for you. Things are pretty straightforward here. It's 5731 Southeast Laurel Street, and I believe they have, as of the 17th or 18th of October, made the connection to the city sewer system. So I'll field any questions if you have them, but otherwise, it's a pretty straightforward annexation request.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. I would entertain a motion then.
I move for the first and second readings by title only and adoption of the ordinance annexing attractive land identified as tax lot 1S2E30AD04400 and located at 5731 Southeast Laurel Street into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee. File number A-2022-001.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded for the first and second readings by title only and adoption of the ordinance annexing attractive land identified as tax lot 1S2E30AD04400 and located at 5731 Southeast Laurel Street into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee. File number A-2022-001. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. It passes unanimously. Is over. Would you please read the ordinance by title only twice?
An ordinance of the City of Milwaukee, Oregon, annexing attractive land identified as tax lot 1S2E30AD04400 and located at 5731 Southeast Laurel Street into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee. File number A-2022-001. And again, an ordinance of the City of Milwaukee, Oregon, annexing attractive land identified as tax lot 1S2E30AD04400 and located at 5731 Southeast Laurel Street into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee. File number A-200, I'm sorry, 2022-001.
Thank you. Mr. Stopford, would you please poll the council?
Councilor Nicodemus.
Aye.
Councilor President Heisey.
Aye.
Councilor Kozrabadi.
Aye.
Councilor Beatty.
Aye.
Mayor Gamba?
Aye.
Motion carried five to zero, ordinance 2220.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question? It's not our first annexation this year. How does, how is it 001? How is it numbered 001? Is it one that just took a long time?
I, I'll have to check. I, it feels like maybe I've been here before, but I...
You haven't.
The number that I grabbed.
We're sure you've been here before.
Yeah.
Oh, he means in 2022.
I don't have a good answer to that. I guess maybe a question if I do discover that I misnamed the file, I don't know what to do about the ordinance.
I think because we have a tax lot ID number, as long as that's not wrong and the street address is wrong, then we could count that as a script errors error. But doesn't file numbers often depend on when they come in? So if this one did just kind of take its time coming through?
I don't think that's the case. So I'll...
Okay.
It's, usually in these cases, it is operator error. So I'm, I, yeah, I might have missed something there. Good, good question, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks, Brett. All right, our next item is the new building energy and climate resolutions. We have three of them. And this will be presented by our Climate and Natural Resources Manager, Natalie Rogers.
Is that what's here? Oh, sorry. No. It's out on my computer.
I didn't get anything.
Okay. Hold on a second. Let me resend the PowerPoint over. Actually, I'm just gonna save this in the shared folder. That works. Or if you can't access the G Drive, like, you know it. It wouldn't be my presentation without a technical. It's to be expected. Okay, I'm gonna send it to OCR. I saved it to my desktop. You should be getting it any... What's it? It shouldn't be, no, no. Surprisingly, I didn't add too many pictures this time. While we get that loaded up, I'm just gonna multitask. Hi, I'm Natalie Rogers. I'm the Climate and Natural Resources Manager for the city. Today, I have Davian Proworth with me, who is our Fleet and Facilities Manager. He's going to join us for the city-owned buildings resolution discussion. And once my computer, there we go, goes, then we'll get this, we'll get this going. All right, it's chugging away, Scott. Hopefully it's sent. Funny HTML thing. So today, we're here essentially as kind of staff's first response to the resolutions that were proposed at the September 6th council regular session. So what we did as staff is we took the feedback that council provided at that session, and then we kind of chewed on it. And we looked at the resolutions, and for each resolutions, there's, there's three of them. We either provided some comment, we provided some feedback, or we actually provided a recommendation for moving forward. So for today, what I'm gonna do is I'm actually gonna present a slide, a short slide deck, that kind of breaks down resolution by resolution, what was originally proposed, and then kind of what you saw in that staff report, which is staff's response back. And then essentially looking for next steps moving forward. I do have a few questions that are baked within that slide deck, and that's really around some of the details on each resolution. There's only a couple of them. Really, for the most part, I really want it to be open discussion with council. I see it, yeah. Look at that. As long as I make my 630 deadline. Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Well, so the first thing that I really want to put up here, and I think this is because I've been getting some feedback from questions from community members, and I think it's just something that's really worthwhile to clarify at the very start. None of these resolutions or the programs coming from these resolutions require existing residential or commercial gas customers to change anything. There are no requirements for folks who have natural gas, existing natural gas connections in their homes, to swap out appliances. There are no requirements for folks with natural gas connections in their homes to stop having natural gas. This is essentially no effect on existing natural gas customers. I just thought, let's open with that, and then we can move on to what each resolution does. So first, just a little brief timeline on kind of how did this conversation come up in Milwaukee's kind of overall climate goals. So in 2018, we actually adopted our Climate Action Plan. We had a lot of stakeholders involved in that process. We had a community forum and the climate summit. We had our utility partners at the table developing that Climate Action Plan, and that's actually where we adopted all of our goals as a community related to emissions reductions that's baked in there. In 2020, January 2020, council actually declared a climate emergency. So all the goals that were adopted in our Climate Action Plan were accelerated by five years. That includes our goal around buildings. So our building goal is by 2035, net zero emissions from building fuels. So this is where natural gas and kind of how this starts to relate to some of our adopted city goals comes into play, is because essentially as a community, we've said we want to reduce emissions and look at options to have net zero emissions from all building fuel types, including electricity, including oils, natural gas, fossil fuels, by 2035. So in the beginning of this year, we had kind of the first look at resolutions around fuels, kind of energy choices for buildings. And that was in January 2022. The details are in the staff report, if you want the exact dates and the links to those council recordings. In July, there was another kind of more informal presentations. They were longer presentations, both from our natural gas utility, Northwest Natural, as well as climate solutions. And then in September, September 6th, that's where we saw these three resolutions that I included in my packet. And essentially, that's staff's first look at these resolutions. And what they affect are city-owned building requirements for retrofits and upgrades. That's that first resolution. Existing buildings, so voluntary programs and strategies. And so what that does is essentially sets forward a way for folks to voluntarily transition over time, and how can the city play a role in, in kind of energy choice within buildings. And then also new construction mandates around connections. And so that's for new construction of new buildings. So those, those three resolutions that were essentially proposed, and staff's on the first time on the 6th, and so now this is staff's response. I also want to mention, in the staff report, I think I explicitly listed it, but also in this conversation, I might use some terms interchangeably. So what I wanted to do is actually break down some of these terms for you, so you understand kind of when they come up in conversation, or if I accidentally mention them offhand without realizing that they're probably jargon. You kind of at least can refer back to this, or for folks watching this presentation later, they can see some of these terms and kind of have a little bit of a reference. So when I use the word decarbonization, what that's really meaning is essentially the transition away from emissions, right? Decarbonization is reducing, really, it's carbon dioxide emissions, but when we're talking about greenhouse gas emissions, we usually use that as a carbon dioxide equivalent. So sometimes you'll see decarbonization to mean things around other kind of greenhouse gas, gases, right? So there's other like nitrogen, or even water vapor is a greenhouse gas, but essentially it's climate-forward emissions reductions, decarbonization. Carbon-free energy, that means that it's energy that creates no emissions, either when it's generated, so electricity, for example, you actually, the electron in your home has no carbon, but when it's created, to create those free electrons, carbon-free means there's no emissions at it. But then other fuels, right, the, the breakdown, the combustion doesn't necessarily occur at time of generation, it might occur at time of consumption. So carbon-free usually means just no emissions, if we can kind of keep it simple. Electrification is actually the transition to use electricity. So you can have electrification without being carbon-free if you're not using carbon-free electricity. Green hydrogen and blue hydrogen, I mention this because hydrogen is another strategy that we're looking at as a, essentially a society, as ways to decarbonize over time. Green hydrogen means that you're making it from renewable electricity, so it could be carbon-free generation electricity. Blue hydrogen means that it's made from methane gas, which is also a natural gas product. And then there's some other components to that, but I won't get into the details. Now, methane and natural gas, those are terms that can also be used interchangeably. Natural gas is a methane product. Methane is natural gas for the most part. There's some other additives in there. But that's kind of where those terms come from, so in the staff report, I refer to it as methane gas. Renewable natural gas, so this is where it starts to get a little tricky, because then we start to have these regulatory-defined terms, right? So renewable natural gas is referenced in a lot of legislation or regulation, and essentially it means that it was, it's methane gas that's recaptured from biosolids processing. So, you know, think about a landfill or a wastewater treatment facility. That's actually capturing some of the gas that is coming out, the methane gas that's coming off of those products, and then we're recapturing it as renewable natural gas. It is the same product, though. It's the same essentially foundation of methane gas, it's just how we're collecting it is different. And then that's what's being regulated. It's kind of similar when we had those conversations around REX. There's kind of similar things around renewable thermal credits, but a lot of details, probably don't need to go into it, I'm happy to explain. And I also threw in a last thing here, RTU, I realized I didn't define that in the staff report, it's rooftop unit, and that's related to a lot of our heating, cooling HVAC systems. Okay. Are there any questions on the terminology before we get into the fun part? Are there any questions on the terminology before we get into the fun part? Okay. So the, I'm gonna kind of present these resolutions as one, two, and three. That's just the way that they're presented in the packet, the staff report to you. I mean, they're interchangeable, we can talk about them in any order, but since I have Damian up here with me, we're gonna talk about city-owned buildings first. So this resolution, as it was drafted and presented on September 6th, what it does is it establishes decarbonization requirements over time or with a triggering event. So decarbonization, of course, that means that now we're gonna look at emissions reduction in our buildings. So a decarbonization event, usually when it's associated with buildings, is related to things like assets, which are essentially those equipment, technology within the building. If you remember back to our Home Energy Score conversations, kind of what is an asset? Sometimes it can include things like insulation, windows. We're not talking about that here. In the staff report, I kind of refer to them as energy-consuming assets, meaning that there's power, there's something going into them to make them function. So what we're talking about are HVAC systems, water heaters, boilers, things where when you sell the building, usually those get left in the building for the next person. You don't really grab them and go. We're not necessarily talking about every single appliance like an electric water kettle, right? So it's mostly these big energy suppliers or consumers within these buildings. So what the original drafted resolution does is it essentially has these trigger moments, that's what I'm gonna call them, of say, a building purchase, renovations, donation or sale. And then it establishes a threshold when city staff need to look at decarbonizing an asset or making it an investment to do a replacement or an upgrade. What it does also is, and it sets that threshold at 50,000, and then it also directs staff to perform a feasibility study by January 1, 2024. And so what we did as for staff response to that, we took in that feedback. That's where I asked Damian to help me come up with just some rough estimates on what if we were to all of a sudden get quotes to do replacements tomorrow on our city buildings, what would that look like cost-wise? There's big asterisk here, because there's things we don't know about, like service upgrades, or, you know, what, you know, what hides in your walls, right? So there might be other things that start to cascade from it. I do want to clarify, though, just in case folks are maybe a little confused just because I shoved everything on one slide. This does not, the resolution as it's written, and even the response of what I've drafted, it does not mean that tomorrow we're gonna go out and electrify or decarbonize an entire building by building. It's really those triggering events, those cascading events, which then kind of feed into when those renovations or those upgrades are done. So it would kind of be like a phased approach over time as needed, or if there was some sort of catalyst. So what we have for our staff response is, for one thing, you know, Damian helped get this kind of overall estimate. I did add little asterisks, just so folks keep in mind that service upgrades would be required. There's also, you know, some buildings in here like City Hall. So one of the recommendations that we have is actually to have a July 1, 2024 effective date on this resolution, and that's because there's some things, like the sale of this existing city building, Coho Development, where there's already paperwork requirement contracts in place, where we can't necessarily, without major difficulties, go back and revisit those and change agreements. So, you know, City Hall, you can see in there, has the largest estimate for decarbonization, essentially full electrification is what we'd be looking at right now, because city operations are on 100% carbon-free electricity starting next year. So, you know, that would be, City Hall, existing City Hall would essentially not be included in that potentially. So just keep that in mind when you're looking at these quotes. It's a bulk number that we got for everything, it's not necessarily all at once.
So City Hall on this slide means this building, not the new City Hall?
Yeah, we define that as Adventist building on, on the table, just for clarification, like just to be clear.
And could you explain what a service upgrade is?
Yeah, do you wanna take that one?
Sure. When... Say you have a gas furnace or a gas boiler. When you convert to electrical, that's a really large electric load, and that, that was not taken into account when the building was built. So you have to go to PGE and ask what it'll take. To get, it's, it's almost like a new service to a building. They go to the local vault, and they say, how much room do we have? How do we get there? What are your panels applied in your building? And occasionally, I think, you know, there, there's certain things we can electrify without a service upgrade, but the major HVAC components, I think, will require a service upgrade.
Yeah. So for folks listening at home, you know, anecdotally, my home, I have a very 1964 split-level old home. It has like a, the original panel, electrical panel that it was built with. And when I plug in something in the front of my house, too many things, maybe the vacuum will say, the entire, all the power goes out for the very front outlets. And that's because I'm putting too many things on one line, and I've maxed out my panel. Now, if I want to go install, like what I just got a quote for a few weeks ago, a level-two charger within my, my garage, I don't have the circuitry, the electricity supplied to my home in order to actually make that change. So I need to ask PGE to come out. PGE is Portland General Electric, our electric utility provider, and actually upgrade how much electricity my home can take safely. And that's kind of what they do. So as Damian mentioned, it's kind of like looking at the infrastructure underground to make sure that it actually safely can provide that much power. So for the rest of the, the kind of responses that, that we're, we're recommending, and this is just language for your consideration. First off, you know, raising those values. When we're looking at things like renovations, 200,000 seemed appropriate. Or for sale or purchase of a building, 500,000 seemed like the appropriate threshold. If we're repairing an asset, so say that there's a major failure or something happened where we would actually have to invest in repairs, if the repair is 50% or more of the asset value, then we would pursue an electrification or pursue a more energy-efficient carbon-free option at that time. And then, as I mentioned, having that July 1, 2024 date, really make sure that we're not backtracking on any agreements or contracts that we've signed already. And then for the feasibility deadline, so that feasibility report could include things like, you know, more updated quotes or cost assessments, or how like gaps to close for city operations, we'll say, or maybe even, you know, looking at what current technology could even satisfy our needs at this time. That we're just changed to June 30, 2024, and that's just really to match our fiscal year. And so if we have contracts, it kind of aligns with, with when we can make sure that we get that budgeted. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't be able to do it sooner, it just means that deadline could be extended. And then there is one question that I have, and I don't know if Annie want to jump in before then, which is just clarifying, you know, we, we have donation of a building as one of these triggers for when we'd be looking at doing, you know, either asset upgrades or repairs or swap outs. You know, it, I guess it wasn't clear, reading the resolution, whether or not that donation meant, you know, the city would be making those upgrades before donating, handing over that, that deed or title, or if it would be a requirement of the person accepting that donation. But what I did want to do, though, just put that in your minds to think about, and then when we get to that discussion moment, I can always bring this back. Do you have any questions on the city-owned buildings portion while I have Damian up here with me?
I have one, and it's just a clarification for me, and it's to Damian. The Milwaukee Center is owned by the city, it's currently run by NCPT. And I don't believe it's super clear about who pays for renovations at what points in our existing contracts, is that correct? So I do just want to highlight, whatever happens over the coming couple of years, we're gonna have to figure that out with NCPT or on our own. But right now, that cost and liability may not actually fall to the city. So we would be coming up with cash to add to a project that maybe we hadn't funded originally. So just something for the Council to, to acknowledge and internalize.
Thanks. And one more thing that I will say, too, is in the staff report, you'll see that I actually have some exemption language in, in essentially our ability for either delaying or, you know, getting exemptions, partial exemptions for things. That's really in order for us to make those decisions to ensure that projects don't come to a standstill, or this isn't a complete barrier to the city being able to either continue with a renovation, or if it's just not economically feasible at this time, or even for things like if we know that technology is right around the corner, and if we wait a year or so, something else is on the market. Essentially just let staff have that flexibility, but it does, you know, still require, I think in the language, you'll see that we need to make an argument for why we're doing that. It's not just kind of a, and we still need to go to Council in order to get actually permission to do that. The other thing that I will add to, and it's not in the staff report, so I just want to mention it now as a potential exemption, or it's not really an exemption, but it would be essentially language that would allow for alternative buildings to get upgrades instead, if we can make an emission reduction, essentially calculation showing that it would be more bang for our buck in order to do a similar upgrade on another building with a greater emission reduction. So for example, if we're doing a renovation at like our, our fire, or our bays over at JCB, our Johnson Creek building, and that would trigger something like, you know, the heaters in our mechanic shop to get upgraded. But for the same cost to do that, we could do a larger heat pump replacement on our public safety building, or some sort of equivalent, and I'm totally coming up, and Damian's probably running the numbers in his head going like, nah, nah, nah. But, you know, if there would be something like that, that we can actually show would lead to greater emission reductions as a city, but would still be a building upgrade, that might be an option for us to, to look at as a feasibility thing, saying, well, can we do this instead? With Council permission, of course.
Um, I do have one question, which is that effective date. I understand that, you know, what you're trying to, you know, that there are certain things already in the works, but I guess I'm a little... I mean, I guess I wonder why we wouldn't just call out those things as exceptions, rather than make the effective date so far out? I mean, that's a long ways, that's a long ways out, and what if the... I'm looking at the list here, what if the heat pumps in the Johnson Creek front building, you know, give out next year, you know?
Yeah, no, it's a good point. You know, the nice part, going through this with Damian and with Peter, is that a lot of what is in the staff response is what staff are already doing and making decisions on when we're looking at things like an asset failure. And I know Damian takes into consideration things like our city goals when he's choosing, you know, what to explore for options for each building. So it's kind of, in a way, you know, by ordinance or resolution, formalizing existing city processes. That's definitely an option, is, is crafting the language on the resolution in a way to get it passed sooner, so things like that can get captured in the resolution. But just so folks do have peace of mind to, you know, and here's, Peter can probably correct me on that. But just so folks have peace of mind, too, you know, we do make those decisions, and, and having something, making sure our decisions match with those, our emissions reductions, as well as our economic goals as a city, or something that staff are considering.
Well, and I want to add, I think the other important part about the July 1, 2024 date is, you know, that allows us to go and make sure that if we do have future, if we have those projects identified, we're able to get them into the budget, right? So it's, it's sort of that budgeting process getting in alignment with our, with our budget.
Okay.
But I mean, Lisa makes a great point, so maybe we could craft the language so that it picks up, you know, if something, if something does go out between now and then, that it, that the resolution triggers that swap.
If there's a failure.
Yeah, if there's a failure, they're gonna have to replace anyway, right?
I think there's the second bullet, under recommendation to increase thresholds. If you just make that effective immediately, I'm fine with that. So if it's gonna, if it's, if the repair is 50% of the asset value, then we go now?
Great.
Thanks, Peter.
For those watching, that was Peter Passerelli, our Public Works Director.
Hey, hey, the chair guy.
Okay, so moving on then to the, I'm gonna call the second resolution, but it's just the existing buildings resolution. Again, voluntary only, no requirements for existing natural gas or methane gas customers to disconnect. This is voluntary-only programs, which folks could take advantage of, like incentives, education programs, et cetera. Voluntary, no requirements. So as it's drafted, what it does, this resolution, is it essentially incentivizes and promotes voluntary electrification programs. This essentially directs staff to, to look at programming within the community, outreach education in the community, things like that, which align with climate goals, and then also align with electrification goals. So, you know, from past discussions with Council, and this is where, you know, this starts to get a little close to a separate subject that's somewhat tangential, which is the Climate Fund, which will be having a conversation on November 15th, which essentially sets up a revenue source for climate-associated programming. Electrification could be one, natural resources, materials, those could also be other ones, so small component of it. But based on conversations around that, fund use, which is probably where programming would come out of, these programs should have an economic value to the community. The goal is essentially to make sure that if there's programs offered to the community, there's benefits beyond emissions reductions, co-benefits, that folks can take advantage of and actually see in the community. You know, we see this often with things like investing in trees, there's a utility benefit, there's also a livability, there's a cooling, there's an aesthetic benefit. Those are kind of what co-benefits are. Trees also can lower utility bills, so that could be an economic benefit. But really, what we'd probably be looking at is, you know, making sure that this has multiple values in our community. It also directs staff to develop strategic plan and timeline around achieving our 2035 goal. You know, that's essentially now, let me see, 13, less 12 years away? So, you know, based on conversations on the 6th, we really looked at things like backcasting, which is when you have a goal and you can actually look backwards and say, okay, in order to achieve that goal in 2035, where should we be in 2030? Where should we be in 2028? So directing staff to be doing that, really kind of taking that backwards and forwards-thinking approach. Our staff response is, cool, yeah, I think this aligns very much with our existing climate action programming. This is called for in the adopted Climate Action Plan. So this is definitely something that staff are interested in, and we have a lot of, you know, community partners who would be able to assist us in this work. I did note that, you know, of course, when we're looking at programming, we really want to include community engagement in that programming to make sure that the programming's tailored to the audience, especially when the audience has particular barriers and challenges, and we don't necessarily know why they can or cannot participate, what would be the most helpful. And I'm kind of talking around it, but I'll mention it explicitly, you know, our low-income community, they would benefit probably the most from a lot of these incentives and programs to take advantage of and be able to actually see changes in homes and residences. And so you really need to make sure that you're talking to folks, actually make sure that they, you don't, you don't develop a program that they can't use. And this also aligns with existing community goals and Council goals. And then, you know, ideas for programming, that was kind of one, one ask last time we were at Council, was kind of thinking about, well, what type of programming would you offer? Ones that exist already, or things that could be really helpful, and we know that they would be helpful based on those community conversations that have happened already, are things like weatherization, resiliency projects or programs, economic incentives on things like bills or ways that we can offer rebates. I know one thing that we were looking at that could be really interesting is how do we, as a city, kind of close that barrier for folks being able to participate in federal rebate programs, right? Like upfront costs, can the city help with those upfront costs? And then that way, folks can actually get federal rebates on their taxes when tax season comes, rather than having to kind of do that dance of, of a, you know, period where those, those funds are locked up. But those are just ideas. And the nice part is that, you know, we'll be having to come back to Council and actually provide, you know, explanations of our thoughts, and then getting feedback and tailoring those programs more. One thing that is really important, as I mentioned, though, is that, you know, this Climate Fund or a dedicated revenue source for this programming is gonna be essential if we're actually gonna be offering a wide variety of programming, especially ones when it's, you know, coming from... coming from financial incentives and particularly ones when we're looking at scale. So, you know, depending on the audience type, businesses, commercial entities, industrial entities, they, their scale is just much larger, you know, every asset that they're looking at, every program that they're looking at is going to be a little bit bigger. So we just want to really make sure that, and you know, this is part of that survey that's going on and it's on Engage Milwaukee right now, is to see why and what type of programming folks are interested in. So we can know what, what scale are we looking at? So I mentioned that just because it's tangential, but then also because it kind of goes a little hand in hand with this resolution. But overall, um, for this voluntary programming with, you know, no community requirements to change anything in their homes, if they have existing natural gas connections. Yeah, I think that this is something that staff would be really excited about and community partners would as well.
Natalie, when you're saying that, are you, uh, cause this was part of our discussion last time around too. When you're talking about programs, are you meaning programs that our staff is running? Or do you mean facilitating connection with existing resources like community energy project? Like with the money that's coming down the pike from the feds for electrification? Yeah, I just want to be very transparent about what that means.
All of the above. So I'm using kind of program, I guess with a big P, if I might be referencing a different program, who knows? But pretty much anything that were, we would want to provide a organized process or pathway for folks to participate in or become educated on. So a pro, for example, education program that we could do is like a dashboard that actually has a, it consolidates all of these resources, some of which are fantastic that you mentioned, like Community Energy Project, who works with, um, you know, communities going potentially through hardship or living hardship or low income, as well as Energy Trust of Oregon, existing state rebates for folks who are utility customers. But it's a lot of information. And so sometimes just being able to consolidate our existing community partners offerings could be a good enough education program that actually connects folks to resources. So yes, it, all of the above, it could be offerings from the city. It could be just making sure folks are aware of existing offerings from our community partners. And, you know, even advocating for other offerings from partners and, um, you know, stakeholders in the future.
Before we keep going, Damian, I know you're enjoying hanging out up here. If you wanted to step off, you're, I think, okay, and council can generate.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining me.
Thanks, Damian.
Okay. And so this is the, the third resolution. And it's just listed as the third attachment three in your packet. So this is the new construction buildings. So what this does is it essentially both recognizes the benefits of building decarbonization and electrification. Once again, they don't necessarily mean the same thing, so I add both of them on here. But then it also prevents new construction buildings, so buildings that are being developed, newly constructed buildings from connecting to fuel, gas infrastructure, say, within the right of way, making that connection. So this doesn't, as we're reading it and as this is kind of part of this response, this doesn't affect building code, it's not touching anything within the building. It's saying that the building cannot connect to that fuel line or that gas infrastructure in the right of way for new construction. So our response is, there's actually, Milwaukee's not the only city looking at some of these options. The City of Eugene is actually presenting code at the, um, their November 15th council session. And what they're doing is essentially continuing a discussion that they've been having for a while. We talked to staff members over at Eugene just to see if they could share any insights. They told us that they would be sharing their code language, um, the week that their packet's being posted. They also kind of gave a little history and background on kind of some of the discussions that they've been having, some of the conversations they've been having with the building codes division. And they were really helpful, especially just kind of on those more operational progress or even workflow asks that we want to really keep in mind as we're exploring this as a city. City of Eugene is looking primarily at low-rise residential buildings. They are also looking at other building types, but I believe that they kind of have a larger conversation that they're having around different building types as well. They also worked with the Good Company, um, which is a consultant that we actually use for our own climate action plan. We used it for our recent greenhouse gas update and our carbon calculator. So they're very well informed of kind of our regional energy utility kind of landscape. And so, um, Good Company really helped them guide some of these decisions. And we'll be seeing kind of how that conversation plays out in the packet on the 15th. And until then, we don't really have much information on kind of that upcoming discussion.
So what do you mean by low-rise residential buildings? They're not doing all residential building?
They, low-rise for, based on kind of this informal conversation we've had with Eugene is, I believe, three floors and under. And then it's kind of encompassing, um, middle housing in some of these like duplex, triplex up to quadplex. And then I believe it's kind of cut off when it starts to get into those larger commercial multifamily buildings. It's what I understand. But until we kind of see how they define it in their code, you know, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I know I've seen low-rise residential being thrown around as a term in quite a few different documents, not associated with this whatsoever. And even in our own city code, we refer to it kind of differently. So we'll kind of have to wait to see how they want to define it and what their strategy is, right? What, what's their intent behind that?
That's consistent with my understanding from watching their city council meetings. You've explained it.
Yeah, and you know, part of that is being guided by the work that they are doing with Good Company, looking at who has the largest emissions, what type of fuel types does each building have? And really they're trying to make a really well-informed decision on, on kind of the why case for some of their code. So when, uh, they're, they're also looking at more of a phased approach with more engagement for maybe some customers who might have less, um, or haven't been as involved in the conversation as Eugene City Council really wanted. So the business kind of commercial industrial, I think that they were really wanting to have more dedicated engagement. So, um, that might be included in some of their decision-making. Once again, we don't know where they're gonna land. And then, so for staff, you know, as city staff ourselves, what we're kind of recommending is, they've been doing a lot of work on this. We would like to see what code that they're presenting and kind of some of the arguments and learnings that they've had at the 15th, just because we know it's only a few weeks away. We're actually hopefully going to be seeing that code next week. So we would like to see what language is there. There's also another consideration, um, which is, you know, a lot of cities, Milwaukee included, Eugene included, there's unknowns. And until, you know, maybe somebody dives in, maybe somebody does the first step, or maybe we actually get confirmation from, um, you know, DOJ or higher, higher entities, we won't necessarily know what legal footing we might be on for each one. We have our own arguments, our own understandings of code and our, our own understandings of home rule, et cetera. But there's always kind of that question in mind and we just need to be aware that there could be things like costs associated with council if we proceed with any sort of mandate or ban or resolution associated with it. And then, um, that's another way that the Climate Fund is tangentially related, where it's depending on council's direction, that's a revenue source. Those funds could be potentially used on the exploratory nature, the exploration of, um, essentially what we can and can't do. And so that's another option. However, I think I mentioned this in the report, right? That's kind of competing priorities. And so we have a, you know, a climate fund that we are establishing a, a threshold for, a kind of a goal balance. But that can get eaten away pretty easily. And we want to make sure that we're balancing those priorities in the community with making sure we either have programming or, or just intentional knowing that there's certain things that are going to sunset and sunrise on costs. And then we can always change those priorities later. So, um, with that, really, that's where I'm gonna stop for now. And then maybe what we can do is have any sort of comment from the public. And then I can always be back up here either with Peter or.
Damian, if you.
Yeah, and, um, we can essentially answer any other questions or be here for a discussion.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Great presentation. Shall we start with the people online?
All right, Mr. Mayor, I see one hand raised. There was a hand raised earlier, but see that hand raised, there's two hands raised on Zoom. And the first one is a number only, and I don't know that's a phone number. So, uh, nine, three, nine, nine, five, four, five, nine, two, five, five. Can, can you hear us?
I don't know if you're talking to me or not. I don't know what that number is.
Okay, and can you, can you say your name for the record?
My name is Dave.
Dave, and city of residence?
Milwaukee.
Don't we?
We usually require.
Yeah, last names?
And last name, Dave?
Oh, yeah, Adams.
Give Adams, thank you.
So go ahead, Dave.
So a couple of questions. So as I looked at the estimates for the, uh, the Milwaukee office buildings that they're talking about, uh, we'll say rent, they, um, I guess question one, have they looked into, prior to making these large changes, have they gone into any weatherization? Whether it's windows, insulation, uh, more efficient lighting, anything like that? That's question number one. I don't know if they did that. And the other thing is, um, I'm aware of sometimes if these, I have no idea how old these buildings are. And, um, cause I know if they try to do improvements to old buildings, sometimes they need to bring, say, all the electrical system or other systems up to code before they, you know, can call that a turnkey project.
I'm gonna just answer this really quickly for council. So we, um, that's why we would do a more in-depth study. But I do believe we've looked at some of those general systems and made sure that the total system would be. Go for it.
And I can add a little bit too, so.
That's rolled into the cost estimates then.
The, uh, this is Peter Passerelli, I'm the Public Works Director. And, you know, what we did, the, the estimates that we talked about this evening are really sort of order of magnitude estimates. We worked with, uh, one of our HVAC, uh, consultants, contractors to, to go through and look at the buildings and look at what types of systems that we would use to replace existing systems. So they were really sort of order of magnitude there. There, there are certainly things that, that we would, uh, go through and, and relook as we go through and do a feasibility study that we talked about also. We did mention that there is some additional work related to reviewing and capturing our needs as they relate to our electric services going into those, into those facilities. And we are, uh, working with P G E to have that conversation. So there, there, there's, there's more work to do on that, on that part. So those are really generally order of magnitude costs, they're not really detailed estimates right now.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead and bring the second one in, keep having the volume turned up a little bit.
Sure. The next person to talk is Ashley Height. And Josh, if you could turn the P up in the room slightly. Ashley, can you hear us?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, and can you say your city of residence, residence, please?
Oh, yes, uh, Portland.
Thank you. I think as soon as they reset the timer, you can.
Saying that last week too.
Scott, can you come help? It's, uh.
Exit board.
Yeah.
So now it's gotten sent on a very short time. Okay.
I don't know what you did that was any different.
Yeah, go ahead and, go ahead and speak.
Okay. Mayor Gemma and city councillors, thank you for providing this opportunity for testimony.
Ashley, hold on, Ashley.
We can't hear you at all.
Josh, can you turn the P A system up in the room a little bit, please?
I know.
And Ashley maybe can speak up.
And Ashley, if you can speak into your, oh, there, it's louder. Okay, go ahead, Ashley.
Okay. Mayor Gemma and city councillors, thank you for providing this opportunity for testimony. My name is Ashley Hay, as I said, and I'm a resident of Portland and a mother to a six-year-old son. So I wanted to say that during the heat wave this past year, that we were lucky that we had some window, um, air conditioners to help us get through that. But in the previous heat wave in 2020, um, we only had one standalone A C and we couldn't keep our house below 90 degrees. So at the time I had to cover my son, who has been four years old, in wet, cool washcloths to keep him from overheating. And, um, also during the 2020 wildfires, we were one level, um, to be set to be prepared to evacuate from the approaching fires. So we were at a level two of threat from evacuation. And I had to put our photo albums by the door and all of our things that we would have to hurry up and take with us. And our air purifier couldn't keep up, so it smelled like a campfire inside the house. So as you must know, these were traumatic experiences for a young family and they were directly connected to climate change, which has worsened every day that we burn fossil fuels. So I'm telling you these stories because we need to get off gas as soon as possible. And I want to express my strong support for the Milwaukee City Council to advance policies promoting clean, safe and climate-friendly buildings. And as a mom, I'd like to point out that children in homes with gas stoves have a 42% higher risk of getting asthma. And about a third of the state's climate pollution comes from homes and buildings, which consume nearly 43% of all energy in Oregon. So those are some reasons that I support you passing these policies. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else online?
Yes, we have one more. Ali, Ali Lee, if you can hear us, say hello and tell us, uh, city of residence, please.
Hello, Ali Lee, Eugene, Oregon.
Thank you, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony. My name is Ali Lee. I serve as the Health and Equity Electrification Specialist with Climate Solutions, working in both Oregon and Washington. I think you bear hard work and ask that you demonstrate leadership in taking on climate change and air quality. It is time to put a stake in the ground in Milwaukee and join approximately 80 jurisdictions in 11 states who have adopted building electrification policies. And we need to catch up with Washington, that now has the most climate-friendly statewide commercial building codes in the nation and are poised to do the same with residential codes. Many homes have kitchen stoves, stoves and furnaces that run on natural gas, which is a fossil fuel as we know. When the gases burn, many of the same invisible pollutants as car exhaust are emitted into the air. Nitrogen oxide is one of the main pollutants emitted. It's a toxin that especially affects children's lungs, increasing risk of asthma. It's also something that public health has worked on recently in Oregon, Washington, which is a campaign called Air Racism. A lot of times that you cannot open your window when there's smoke outside, but then also you don't have the ventilation inside. So in sense, our impacted communities are trapped. We can do better than the health statistics are showing us in Oregon. 4,381 cases of pediatric asthma, 35,000 cases of adult asthma, 19,200 cases of C O P D. And these diseases are disproportionately impact low-income individuals and people of color. Indoor air quality due to the use of fossil fuels in our homes need to be at the forefront. It's also important that we ensure that low-income families have access to the capital to assist with this transition and their homes, and that includes utilizing city and other public dollars. With the passage of the Inflation Reduction Act, which also has a lot of incentives, we will see significant funding for heat pump installation, home energy retrofits and other electrification upgrades in L M I communities. This is a game changer. Cities who are working towards these actions now will be better poised to quickly put use to the, put use to these. Cities who are working towards these actions now will be better poised to quickly put use to these funds, put those funds to use to work in their communities. I urge you to pass these resolutions and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else online?
Mr. Mayor, I see no more hands raised. I'll check the OSR inbox. No emails and no more hands raised online.
I'll check back in after we do the room. Laura.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Gamba and council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Laura Edmonds. I'm the CEO of the North Clackamas Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here to represent the business voice for our community because the business voice has not been heard at this table on this issue at all. So we would like to make sure that there's been a number of concerns that we still have not had addressed yet with, and I realize and I appreciate Natalie confirming that or stating that there isn't going to be mandated changes for existing structures. But when you look at this, that does not give us certainty that that is not what's going to happen down the road. So with the business community, there's manufacturers or different organizations that use natural gas. It's required of their processes. Oregon Tool is a local company, over 700 employees in your community, probably one of your largest employers uses natural gas. They have unanswered questions because when we talked about this, just in a meeting this week, there's not understanding of, you're talking new construction. But what if it's a upgraded line that's required for a business or a residence? And it comes from the meter to the house or their structure? There's no certainty. There's still unanswered questions on what that means because it would be considered a new or upgraded line. So there's unanswered questions as far as if that's even possible with this. Talking about a ban on any fuel that your citizens alone use and you're talking thousands of residents, thousands of businesses that use natural gas. To talk about a ban without absolutely understanding the impact to your community as a whole, it's unforgiving. This should be going to the voters. Your community is unaware of what you guys have been talking about. They've not been brought to the table as a whole. Most of your activists and your like-minded supporters have been brought to the table for this discussion. But anybody that has a different thought process has been not, they've not been invited. So we're asking that this not be passed. There's not a ban on natural gas until additional information and questions have been answered. And we all worry about weather-related situations. There's no complete understanding of what's going to happen when you consider a monopoly. We usually oppose monopolies. If you have one energy source that your entire communities are depending on, what's the pricing going to look like? There's far too many unknowns right now. The homework hasn't been done. The data hasn't been done, researched yet. So we'd like to understand more. Thank you.
Thank you. Alma. Alma, state your name and city residence for the record, please.
Yeah, hi. So my name is Alma Pinto and I am a resident of Milwaukee. Sorry, just like random, maybe a little bit. Okay. I also work as a climate justice associate with Community Energy Project or CEP. I already submitted a joint letter with other advocates from community-based organizations in support of the resolutions. So I'll just summarize a few of our points to be mindful of time. We strongly believe beneficial electrification policies such as those outlined in the resolutions are critical to reducing greenhouse gas emissions and helping the city meet its climate goals. More importantly, these policies are also central in protecting the health and safety of residents in Milwaukee, increasing climate resilience and reducing energy burdens by expanding access to high-efficiency heating and cooling with the adoption of heat pumps and heat pump water heaters. There are organizations that are already working within communities to provide whole-home retrofits to transition vulnerable households to all electric fully weatherized homes. CEP, for instance, promotes neighborhood stability by providing direct home repairs and energy-efficient upgrades for our clients. Our successful programming has helped thousands of households live more comfortably, use less and use less energy. Our frontline communities are asking for comfortable homes, lower bills and access to clean energy programs and incentives. Passing these resolutions could mean that organizations like ours would be better able to work in Milwaukee alongside the city to ensure that all Milwaukee residents benefit from this transition with a particular focus on low-income households, renters and BIPOC communities. So CEP along with the African-American Alliance for Home Ownership, Oregon Physicians for Social Responsibility and the Green Energy Institute urge you to pass these resolutions. Thank you for your time.
Sorry, I didn't know you just. All right, Anne.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to offer testimony tonight. I'm Anne Pernick and I'm with Safe Cities at Stand Out Earth and I'm a resident of Portland, Oregon. Safe Cities works with local government leaders and advocates around the US and Canada to pass local policies that stop fossil fuel expansion and phase out fossil fuels. We do that to help protect local health and safety and global climate. And building electrification is one of the policy areas we support and it's one I'm happy to say that is accelerating very quickly. Last week, Safe Cities and Partners hosted a joint policy announcement on building electrification. And there, in just the last six months, 30-plus policies have passed at the state and local level. Most of those are local policies in the US and Canada, 30-plus policies in six months. This is very rapid growth. These include places with cold winters like Montreal, Quebec and Brookline, Massachusetts. And with any luck tonight, Milwaukee will join forces with these leaders and communities all around the US and Canada. I should say 30-plus policies introduced or passed. So if Milwaukee passes these resolutions tonight and starts this process, you will be in the company of these folks. So all is to say you are not alone. This movement is growing rapidly. But you, of course, would be in the leading edge in Oregon. And if you pass these resolutions tonight, joining Eugene in moving this forward in the state and their communities all around the state, working on their own actions and looking to your leadership. One of the people who spoke on the joint announcement event last week was Davina Duer. And Davina Duer is an architect, a former city councillor and also a Washington State representative now. And she spoke about how the wave of local policies in Washington State inspired the state's new adopted statewide commercial building code and also work that's in process on the statewide residential building code. And Representative Duer said, this is a quote from the event, "Fossil fuel infrastructure has an outsized health and safety impact on our most vulnerable community members, both because of where that infrastructure is often located and the fact that they have less choice when living in older housing stock." As folks have brought up tonight, even under normal operations, houses with gas stoves, the kids in those houses have a 42% higher chance of asthma. It's comparable to the impact of secondhand smoke. But then things go wrong. Sometimes there are leaks. And in 2012, there was a leak in Milwaukee, eight houses had to be evacuated. And leaks like that have short-term and long-term consequences, including business consequences. The 2016 leak and explosion in Portland, Oregon. There was a settlement in a lawsuit or not, oh, okay.
Go ahead and finish.
Go ahead and finish that thought. Sorry for going over time. So in 2016, there was a major leak and an explosion in northwest Portland. And just early, just in October, a jury awarded two of the victims of that, a gas leak inspector and an employee of one of the impacted businesses. Not a settlement, a jury award of $10.4 million. And the contractor is on the hook for that in that case. But in some cases, it's cities that are also getting sued over things like this. So thank you for letting me go over a little bit. And I hope that you move all of these resolutions forward and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Xanthia.
Hi there. My name is Xanthia Woolens. I am a Milwaukee resident. So good evening and thank you for this opportunity tonight. My name is Xanthia Woolens. I work for the Oregon Environmental Council, but I am mostly here tonight as a Milwaukee resident, as a young person who wants a family that thrives in the future and who cares deeply about climate change, our collective public health and community access to affordable housing. So I want to thank you all for your serious consideration of these resolutions and for your work so far in these discussions and being a climate leader in the state. It really matters to me to know that my community I belong to is thinking about my future and the well-being of my friends, my family, my neighbors. Buildings are both a cause of climate pollution, being the second highest source of climate pollution in Oregon and are also an invaluable solution to protect us from the climate impacts we, every person in this room, is experiencing right now. Extreme heat, wildfire smoke, air pollution, et cetera. So we have to seize this moment. There is no time to waste. We have to seize this opportunity right now to make our homes and building one healthy for our families without toxic, explosive and polluting natural methane gas by building all-electric. We need to build smart from the start to not build buildings that are setting us up for expensive and wasteful retrofits in the future. And that three people living on low income and renters like me still have access to incentives and support in transitioning towards a healthier and more affordable homes and electric appliances. As well as the schools, we send our kids the places that we work in, the buildings that we work in. So I'm here tonight to support and urge this council to pass all three resolutions, each of them advancing very pressing needs in different ways. And it would really make me proud to know the place I live is taking real action towards my future. So thank you for this time. Many of us in Milwaukee are cheering you on and also eagerly anticipating your decision. There's no time to waste to take action on these very important matters. So thank you for having me.
Thank you. And Greer.
Mayor Gamba, members of the city council, I'm Greer Ryan. I live in Portland and I am the Clean Buildings Policy Manager for Climate Solutions. You've already heard tonight from one of my colleagues and you've heard from me before, so I'll keep it very, very short. Just to say, I really hope that you act in passing these resolutions without delay. Climate delayism is the new climate denial, just as we're learning that gas use in buildings is kind of the new asbestos or lead paint or cigarette smoke. Bad for our health and methane is probably the top priority for what we need to address to address the climate crisis. So really appreciate all the work you've done. The staff presentation was just extremely helpful and informative and I think you've got great staff. So looking forward to hearing your discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else online?
Mr. Mayor, double checking the email. Nope. And no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. Nobody else in the audience? Hang on one. Okay. All right. Thoughts or any staff, do you have anything that you want to respond to that came up in the?
I don't have any response unless you have any specific questions that you'd like our perspective on. I did, don't know if it's helpful if I pull slides up again or if we just kind of want to have an open discussion on each resolution.
We'll start with that, but thanks for being up there because I'm sure questions will come up.
Yeah, I actually just wanted to address the concern about Oregon Tool and those particulars that was brought up by Laura Edmonds from the North Clackamas Chamber. Can you address those concerns and what that would, I mean, how that would look?
Yeah, so I think, so what I heard is that there was a concern that any sort of prevention of connecting new lines to services would be a barrier to those industries. I think that's part of that conversation around how does this impact different audiences and communities? I think definitely Eugene has been taking those considerations and that's why we recommended that we kind of wait to see what direction or learnings come from their code application. What I will say is that, you know, if they have existing natural gas lines today, there's, the resolution is not pulling those away. They have existing service lines. I think how we define that is definitely part of that code language that we need to go back and forth on. And definitely I think that that would be a welcoming part for community members to participate in and offer up their perspectives on. But the resolution does not require them to transition away if they have existing connections to natural gas. So hopefully that sways some of their concerns.
Yeah, basically the resolution that addresses that is talking about new connections to the pipes. And if there's a new building that requires a new connection, that's what would not be allowed. If you have an existing connection and you need a larger connection or your connection needs repair or anything like that, it doesn't change anything there. It's simply trying to reduce the amount of sunk costs in new buildings going forward, given that by 2035, we need to be as much as possible having replaced.
Can we give people the choice and incentivize for going electric?
That's definitely how these resolutions can play with one another, you know? So it might be there's Energy Trust of Oregon is fuels neutral. They look at efficiency only. And so there might be, I know that they do have industrial-specific incentives that they offer. I don't know those off the top of my head, but you know, that's definitely something that, what I was mentioning before, when we're looking at scale around city incentives, that could be something that we help incentivize, which is fuel switching for those kind of commercial industrial customers. There's also other technologies that are out there and they're coming out, you know, in, it seems like every year, but some of them, that's why I kind of mentioned methane, sorry, not methane, hydrogen at the beginning of this conversation, which is maybe as we move forward, that's an option. Right now, today, it's not just based on the availability of that technology, the research coming out and essentially, you know, the cost. But you know, the language is not meant to be, particularly when it comes to promoting a certain fuel for existing buildings on programs and incentives, it's not supposed to be prohibitive to other decarbonized energy options.
I do, I do want to add one thing though. I think it would be fair to say, so there's a scale issue there. So you know, Oregon Tools, for example, we would, we would struggle to provide them incentives on switching out, but smaller commercial customers and businesses, you know, through education and outreach and perhaps program incentives that we're able to provide, we could, we could help out from time to time.
And that's, we did for the Climate Fund, which is, once again, on the 15th is when we were really having that conversation that offers a variety potentially of different programs. We did email everyone who had a Milwaukee business registration and including, you know, different commercial customers to participate in a business survey to see what type of programming they'd be interested in, so we can see where there is gaps. And yeah, Peter's totally right in that there's kind of a scale issue when we're looking at funding, but that's definitely the feedback we bring to council for consideration and future program development and. And we will work with park community partners to see how we can all work together to, to help close that gap.
So when we're talking new construction, we're talking residential homes.
That's up to you. You know, so I think that the original resolution included all new construction. At least I should say the, the resolution that was discussed on the September 6th council session. Eugene, they might be presenting a different code on, in different timelines. It's kind of whatever council thinks that that direction should be. Right now, staff were just responding to that existing presented resolution, which was all construction.
Do you want to take them?
One at a time?
One at a time?
Sure. So, I mean, yes. At this point, what I'm thinking, since staff offered some adjustments to the city owned buildings resolution that made sense. And they haven't had a chance to formalize that in a new resolution. I would want to bring this back for an actual vote until they have a chance to formalize that. But let's have the conversation to make sure that the decisions or the formatting that they do of the resolutions going forward are right. So that when they bring it back, we're prepared to vote. So any thoughts you have or additions or changes?
Well, I mean, the city building one to me is the easiest. I thought the staff's recommendations made sense. And, and I appreciated the exchange with the city manager and Peter on the not putting the date so far out, as long as we have the thresholds and we can exempt the two projects that we're concerned about, but not put the dates for all other city buildings so far out. I think it looks good.
I do just want to make sure that I'm hearing you correctly. So the way that we have this is we're not exempting buildings. We're just saying if there's a major retrofit required of, of a system, of a power system during that time because of a failure, that would be replaced with a electric system. But I don't think I'm saying there's possible. We're just, we're buying and selling buildings right now. So it's just a little awkward for me. It's, I don't want to over promise and under deliver. But I, I think if you're comfortable, I'd like to just word it as if there is a system failure, the replacement will be, or whatever the second bullet is. Is that fair? Thank you.
Can you, can you bring that resolution up so that we're looking at the bullets while we're having the discussion? Or I know it's not, you know the slide I'm talking about. The one with all the blind teeth thingies.
I'm just going to pull up the PowerPoint. Am I sharing right now, Scott? It's only been two and a half years.
So again, staff's response was just changing those thresholds for $200,000 for renovations, $500,000 for sale or purchase. And then, you know, repairing if it's greater than 50% of the asset value or, you know, then we would be required to pursue electrification or decarbonization.
Immediately.
Immediately. If it's, I mean, depending on what's going on, if it's like a failure and it's cost equivalent, you know, that's definitely one of those things where even without having to do the maths, sometimes the electric options are more energy efficient and we'll prioritize what's more energy efficient and often was cost effective.
And all of our buildings participate in the Energy Trust.
Strategic Energy Management Program?
Yeah. I just looked at, that was a question that came up earlier that we didn't quite address. So I just wanted to mention that. I think the first commenter kind of asked about that.
That's, yeah, that's a great point to make. And that's definitely something that was worth reiterating is that energy efficiency is just makes economic sense, no matter what fuel you're looking at. And there's often, Energy Trust of Oregon offers incentives around energy efficiency for commercial industrial buildings that the city can look at taking advantage of. You know, they definitely involve themselves or are asked to be involved. They're great partners on any sort of development. And they are great at providing those recommendations on how to utilize those incentives too. So thinking about things like windows and insulation, you know, they're definitely, that's part of kind of looking at some of these total costs. But I will say that there seems to be more existing incentives for things like windows and insulation rather than any sort of asset replacement that takes into account fuel switching.
And I, and I would add several years ago, we did go through a major rehab of all of our facilities and went through and updated all of the lighting and some of the, some of the HVAC controls. So we spent some, some, some money to do that. And, and we saw a marked improvement in our, in our energy consumption in those buildings.
Thank you.
I had a question, just it's, and I just, it's in the interest of transparency. So on the slide and in our packet, we have a number, a total that the 2022 estimate comes to. In the staff response kind of tweaks to this, does that affect that bottom line any?
Yeah, yes, it does.
Can you explain how it does?
Yeah, absolutely. So that 2.32 million, that is essentially the sum of all these values that you see on the screen, the bolded values, looking at if, again, this year, using this quote, we were to go to swap out every building energy consuming asset. That's what that would be. That is not what this resolution is directing. It's, it's saying over time as these triggers happen. And already with these kind of changes or tweaks, for example, city, existing city hall, which is this building, which you can see is the 683,000. So that's actually the most significant in cost. I would assume it also, just considering the age of the building, might also be that one that has more of those, we don't quite know until some walls are open, changes. That would actually get pulled out of that estimate, which Peter is much better back of the end of both math than I am. But that would then put you more around, you know, 1.7 million. So already you see a significant decrease in, in kind of those total costs overall. But once again, that's not what this resolution is proposing. It's saying over time.
I also just want to make sure that everyone knows though, that this is not a comprehensive list of our facilities.
Please.
This is not a comprehensive list of our facilities. This is a representation of the highest costs that we would be affected by. So for other individuals, this will affect more than just this list. And it's why that in-depth study is still going to be really important. I don't want anyone to get wed to the number for that purpose because it's going to shift.
Yeah, and as I mentioned earlier, these, these are sort of order of magnitude numbers, right? So there's sort of a gross number and there's, it's like we're in the ballpark, right?
Right. Anything is one quote. They always tell you to get three, right?
Well, it's, it's not even really a, a full quote. It's an order of magnitude sort of estimate, like, hey, take a look at this building. What do you think it's going to cost to do this? It's not a detailed quote.
So most of the things on the list were heat, right? When Ann says, this isn't all of our city facilities. I mean, yeah, we have pump stations, we have other things, but they're not generally heated, are they?
Well, I mean, we do have some well buildings. And treatment facilities and, and those have, you know, generally electric heat. And, and most of those, the ones that don't are the 40th and Harvey campus. We do have some gas powered heat in, in the big old white building. And then we have a, a gas boiler in, in the old fire station that provides hot water heat, floor heat for that, for that building.
Okay.
We also, Burtman's not on here.
Yeah.
Pardon?
Burtman is not on here. So it's, it's not substantial. I'm just making sure that everyone's aware this was never intended to be a comprehensive list.
I mean, this whole SCADA system we've been installing to control all of our utilities, that's all electrical run.
Yes, that's, that's all, that's all electric, yeah. And yeah, it doesn't impact, it has no impact or relationship to this system.
So I, I'm just trying to think of a way to unpack this for folks who aren't used to looking at these kinds of numbers or these, these kinds of decisions. So for example, and this is more in here than on that list. Like there's places where you have a boiler on here. So it's a, or a heater. And it's equivalent to, I would say, or suggest, my hot water heater goes out in my house. I have a choice at that juncture on whether I replace it with another natural gas fueled water heater or if I choose to go to some, one of the myriad of electric options. Is that a fair, very, very simplistic breakdown of kind of what we're talking about here?
Yeah, those are home energy assets. So yes, those, your water heater at home or your furnace at home or your air conditioning. And what you can kind of think about these, these order of magnitude numbers are is when you're maybe shopping for a home and you're kind of, you find this home and you, you like it, but you know that in the future, just looking at the age of certain things, okay, well, that, you know, was replaced five years ago. That was replaced 10 years ago. It's, it's the math that you do in your head to think in my ownership of this building, how much I'm going to, am I going to spend over time on replacing those assets when they need to be replaced? And so you might look at a home and say, okay, that's going to be 100,000. Okay, that's going to be, you know, 150, or that's only 15,000. And that could affect your decision making. That's kind of why we provide this to you, so you can see that perspective on like, okay, if you're going to shop for homes with that mentality of decarbonization to meet climate goals, what kind of cost would you roughly be thinking about before actually getting somebody in, an inspector, an actual quote to get a detailed breakdown when the time comes when you actually need to?
Well, one other thing I would, I would say too, it's more, more like your gas furnace than your water heaters, what we're talking about, the, the water heating units that we have. We didn't really include those in here because those are really, really sort of small scale. Not very expensive for us to, to change out. So these are the ones that we would have larger impact on. So it's that, it's that gas, it's, it's a furnace, that heating unit that you have.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we just did this in April. Our gas furnace died. Luckily, it didn't kill us in the process because it was patched together with epoxy and could have been leaking all sorts of carbon monoxide into our house that whole time. And we just lucked out. And so at that point, we chose to switch to, to ductless heat pump system. It was expensive. I do want to be very clear about that. It was more than twice the cost of what we could have done with just a new natural gas furnace system. But it was a choice that we, we had the ability to make and it's the choice we made. Just because it was twice as expensive for us does not mean that that is comparable to the expenses that we would face in replacing equipment in our buildings throughout the city. So that part does not translate. The juncture at which you make the choice does.
Well, and, and I think part of it too is how these resolutions play together and that there's not, as I mentioned, many incentives or rebates or options with the intention of fuel switching. And so that could be somewhere or something that the city could step in. And if council prioritized, that could be something that we look at and making that kind of cost decision a little less of a chew when you're kind of, oh, I'd like to do this to meet climate goals. I'd like to do this because of a certain reason, but cost is the barrier. And then for folks also who are listening or watching in the staff report, there is more of a breakdown of kind of even what assets we're looking at for some of these order of magnitude estimates. So you can kind of see where maybe some of these values are coming from.
Any more on the city building resolution?
I just, I do have one more question and a couple of places there. It would be replacing things with mini splits or otherwise replacing with heat pumps. Are any of those situations where you would be adding cooling to a space that currently only has heat?
Perhaps. I, I don't have that, I don't have that answer to that. There, there, there may, there may be.
It looks like maybe 40th and Harvey might be one. Okay. I was just curious.
I mean, those, we have small, we have small window units. So there might be an opportunity to add some cooling at the, at the white building there.
And so, you know, one question we did have for council was kind of that question around donation of buildings. And maybe what your perspective is on, you know, what should the city's responsibility be when we're going to be donating a building or a property? And it otherwise, or it does trigger kind of some of these decarbonization replacements. And that could be something that staff provide kind of draft language on our recommendation in the resolution. And you'd talk then. But I just wanted to pause if there is any strong opinion on it. So that way.
I, I mean, I, I would add that I, I, I think those situations might be more the exception than, than the rule. And, you know, maybe if there is that, when that does occur, then we have that discussion where a donation occurs as opposed to spelling out what we want to do in a, specifically in a, in a resolution from that perspective.
That would be my inclination is, is just a really, because those are going to be so, so individual case by case. I almost think that it would be difficult to draft something that, that would truly be able to include all of the potential different scenarios. So.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the, the glaring one is City Hall. And we've already done the RFQ, RFP process, whichever process we did. And that was not included in that. So it would be a, a change in what we were doing there. So that, that would be tough.
I forgot if I move on to the next one. Wait, hold on. There we go. Sixteen Buildings Resolution. So as a reminder, this really is a voluntary program development prioritization kind of guidance for staff, along with directing staff to develop a strategic plan to look at how we're going to achieve our 2035 goal when the time comes and doing a little backcasting. Just for listeners again, voluntary.
Questions or concerns about this one?
I guess I do think this is the one that, I mean, yes, you, you're, you're right to emphasize the voluntary because in the conversations I've had with people, this is where, and, and the comments that we've all gotten from people, this is where people are concerned. I just put in a furnace. You're going to replace my furnace? I also think there's a lot of stuff here that, I mean, in terms of what we call for here and prioritizing what staff does toward implementing the Climate Action Plan. There's a lot of things here that to me maybe should be wrapped into a bigger discussion around the Climate Fund and what are the next steps in the Climate Action Plan? And so I guess I'm not a big fan of this resolution. I just think it creates a lot of confusion. It is stuff we should do. I totally agree. But I think putting it in a resolution ahead of adopting our Climate Fund, I don't know, it just doesn't quite sit great with me.
I, I, I think this is the one that, as Counsel Beatty said, that people have struggled with because it, because it's, it includes efforts to decarbonize over time. So I'm assuming people are saying eventually you're going to force us to get rid of our gas stoves and our gas appliances or our gas line. I think that's where they have the most trouble. This is the one I would like to see as much engagement and involvement from the community as possible and from the shareholders or stakeholders and shareholders as possible. Just to avoid any of that. How can I say? Right now, there's a narrative in the city that we're just doing whatever we want as a council. Right now, there's a narrative out there that the city isn't listening. And I think when it comes to the city owned building, that's pretty simple. And I think when it comes to the city-owned building, that's pretty simple. When it comes to the new construction, that one seems pretty simple as well. But I think existing buildings, everyone's thinking we're safe for now, but what's going to happen in five years or as we get closer, pretty, you know, who's going to force us to do something? And I think we, we have to dispel that. And there's a lot of disinformation out there about this and a lot of efforts to continue to release misinformation about this. So this is the only one that I think that we need, we, before we pass is we should get the involvement and bring people to the table. So we do have a broader support for it, just because again, there's even, with people who are generally pleased with our council, even they're starting to say that we're not listening. And I think we need to correct that, and this could be the olive branch that does that because of what it's requiring.
I would absolutely agree that there's been a concerted and well-funded effort toward misinformation throughout our city. And that does need to be addressed, and that absolutely would be part of our outreach program. With or without this resolution, let's be very clear, with or without this resolution, or a resolution like it, our Climate Action Plan requires that we are net zero building energy by 2035. We don't have to pass any kind of resolution, and that still happens.
Yeah.
So I want everyone to be super clear on that. Doesn't require a resolution, that's happening. This resolution simply sets up the opportunity for us to utilize staff time to help people find ways to access federal money, state money, other opportunities to switch out their appliances when and if one goes bad. So rather than just sort of automatically buying another gas hot water heater when your hot water heater goes bad, go, wow, there's, there's a city program. And unless we are putting active effort into spreading that around, most people are not going to know about that. So they're, they're just automatically going to go buy something that in 2035. So this, this to me, in some ways, is the most important resolution because it's, it is easing people into it. It is creating a city program to help people find opportunities, find resources to begin to slowly switch out their appliances and have some of the costs covered for that. That is the point of this resolution. So it, I know it seems counterintuitive because people, because of the misinformation that's been propagated. This one sounds like the scary one, but this is actually the one that is benefiting the very people that are nervous about this. So we have to be careful. And I would add that the vast majority, once they understand what we're talking about, are in support. The vast majority, seventy percent solid, are in support. It's, so it's all about the outreach, and this resolution creates direction to staff to do the outreach.
So this is more like, and this is just for the general public. Maybe this will help ease their mind. This is more of a resolution to say, hey, we already established that we're going to be zero at 2035. That's already been established. This is a resolution putting in motion the community's effort to come together and figure out what that looks like and how we get there and what programs they'd like to see, what incentives they would look for, is that more-
And how we can help them. And, and creating a situation where the city is proactively helping them towards that change, rather than just, well, if you happen to hear about that federal program that's available out there, you happen to hear about that state program or something that-
Right, it's more proactive, going out there and-
Yeah, this, this will be, create a clearinghouse, it will create outreach opportunities, it will create interactive opportunities for people to learn about what's out there. That's the point of this resolution.
So I, I appreciate the faith in the city's staff and, and their ability, and they do an incredible job, but I just, I gotta say that there's nothing that we can do that is going to stop people from not knowing about things because this happens all the time with our outreach efforts. So I, I want to be cautious about promising the moon with, with what we can do around this. I, I think that there's a lot of good opportunities that are already available, and there will be more good opportunities that will become available. And I do think that it is valuable for the city to play a role in that. But we are not going to fix the part where people don't get to take advantage of really great opportunities that are out there around decarbonization because it, it just always happens. That's the way of it. So when I am listening to this conversation and thinking about what Counselor Coserbody said, I am thinking about last week when we were, Counselor Beatty and I came to present to the Planning Commission on Parks, and we heard a conversation the Planning Commission was having about community engagement and frustrations they were feeling and hearing from the community. And I absolutely believe that we need to work on decarbonization. I am deeply committed to that work. And I am, I don't know, maybe I'm even more of an idealist than anyone might have imagined, but I, and maybe it's inappropriate, but given that we have so much support in this community for our climate goals and for truly taking action on addressing climate change, I worry that we are paying a cost that we don't need to pay and that we shouldn't pay by moving faster than our community is ready for us to move. I believe in this community. I believe that when you engage and you have hard conversations, they get it. And I believe we have, and we've heard from a number of them tonight, quite a few people in this community who care deeply about these issues. We also know that there's a lot of people in this community who do not know what is happening and are not aware of these conversations. And we heard about that from Laura Edmonds in her testimony. And I feel like there has to be a place where we can meet, where we can actually do that work and have the community come with us, rather than saying, oh, well, once you understand, you'll be fine. I, I feel like we have a lot of smart people in this community. I respect them. I want to continue to have their respect. And I think some of that is making sure that we have deeper conversations around things that have been misrepresented very broadly. I ended up taking a poll from Northwest Natural that could not even be characterized as a poll. It was, or a survey, it was straight up trying to get me to believe things around what the city might or might not be doing. It was deeply disingenuous. I have a lot of background. Your average resident who took that survey doesn't have the background, and now they are even more misled and confused and more likely to be reactive if we move faster than this community is ready. I don't like saying that. I know climate change is urgent. I know we need to do things. I do not believe that taking a few more months, whatever the amount of time is that it would take to have the real conversation with the community is going to, I don't think that the cost of doing that to the climate is greater than the cost to city council and city government in our relationship with our community by moving faster than the community is ready to move with us. And I, I understand that this conversation currently is about number two. I actually feel that way about number three as well. I think there's just as much information out there from the conversations I've had and from the emails I've received around what we mean by that future, that elimination of the future one. So I, yeah, I, and I do continue to be very concerned about what sort of legal bills and legal exposure we may have if we move on that third one. It's hard to say that, I gotta say.
So on the conversation part, what is the catalyst for that conversation?
What is the catalyst?
Sure.
Well, we could do something that was more of a resolution that was just doing the directing staff to have the conversations and not go so far as to say, this is what we are going to do, but to say, this is what we would like to do. Here's what we mean by that. This would be more in keeping with how we have done things like the SAFE program, for example, in terms of saying, we hear this concern about climate. In our community-developed Climate Action Plan, we identified emissions from buildings as being one of the greatest sources of carbon in our community. We have this 2035 goal. We really want to meet it. Situation is only getting worse around climate. So we want your help. We think that there are a lot of opportunities financially that are coming in the Inflation Reduction Act, and we are aware of a number of programs that are out there at the state level. And we would like to figure out a way to help connect our community with those resources and help them find the pathway to decarbonizing their homes and their businesses as fast as possible. But we need to know if that's something that makes sense to you and what your concerns are. This is me talking off the top of my head. So I, I am not the outreach person. I am not the staff person, but since you asked.
I mean, I think if you want, I mean, there could be, I mean, we're going into the winter months, right? And so it's not the best time for fairs or festivals, but we could be looking to next summer do some kind of energy fair or energy festival-like thing that like us, we go recently did. And we could be using the pilot articles, and we could be using, you know, there could be development of a, you know, a web, I mean, Natalie's got a sustainability webpage already, but there could be a special page for this stuff. I mean, there could be things to build up to a community conversation next summer. When we're, anyway, I mean, I just-
I have some wonderings, like everybody else here has expressed. Do we need more education on this, the community? More engagement? Yes. You know, as a teacher, you don't put a book in front of a little kid and expect them to read it. You got to teach them phonics first, right, before they can read it? And it takes some time. I just, are we going too fast? You know, I, with the existing buildings, you know, a lot of people, like Counselor Coserbody said, were like, what are they going to do? Come in and make me take out my stove? And that's a lot of people out there asking that question. I've been wondering if we do it, if, why don't we give folks a choice? I'm wondering if we do it on new construction, will this cost us possible business moving in? I don't, these are wonders, I have no idea. I'm just wondering. I don't know if it will. I just, I, I think we just, I, I believe in climate change. Like I said, I've gotten solar panels. I have, I have a seven-year-old who's got to live on this planet, hopefully a lot longer than me. And are we doing enough to really educate the community on what all this means?
Ultimately, I feel like when we're doing this work, that's to me the most critical piece of, of it. It's not what resolutions we pass, it's not what laws we put in place. The outcomes we need are carbon emissions reductions and, and the people understanding that that is critical, not us telling them it's critical. Sorry, go ahead.
I mean, if I walk up to your average Joe and I say, what's decarbonization mean? What's the answer they're going to give me? I don't, I mean, it's a wondering. I don't know what answer they're going to give me. How do we, how do we do it so if I do go up to someone and say, what is decarbonization? And they can tell me right away, like, it's this, these are the things you need to do, right? I mean, it's, you know, I can ask them, who's the starting guard for the Trail Blazers? They'll be like, Damian Lillard, right?
Couldn't tell you that.
Most people might, but I'm, I'm just saying, what are we doing so we can, we can have, like, these conversations are regular, right? Folks are having these conversations at home with their kids. We have to, we have to, we have to normalize it, if I'm making sense, like, so folks can really understand it. If I walked into a fourth grade classroom and I said, all right, kids, what's, you know, what's decarbonizing, what's one thing you could do at your home? I would, hopefully, I'd have a ton of kids raising their hands saying, this is what you can do. Unfortunately, that's not, that's not the case, right? So do we need to do more? Yeah. Do we need, how long will that take? I don't know, maybe we do more, focus on the weatherization resilient and like giving people, like teaching people where they can go to learn about energy-efficient appliances and things like, you know what I mean? Like, do that outreach first. And I don't know, these are all just wonderings I have, I don't-
So a couple of thoughts. We know that over the next few years, there are roughly 2,000, 2,000 new housing units coming to the city of Milwaukee. That is literally a 20% increase in the number of housing units in the city of Milwaukee. Those can either be methane emitters or not. And it'll make no difference to the people that live in those buildings. They won't know the difference. If the apartment building is built with 100% electric, and that's the way it is, that's what they rent, they won't care. If it's got gas furnace, they won't care about that either. That's what's, that's the heat that's in the building. The point at which that control occurs is right here, right now. So we either increase the emissions of methane in this city by 20% over the next three years, or we don't. That is literally a choice we're making.
But that's assuming that all of those units are methane-fueled, and I don't think that's true.
The home builders are joining Northwest Natural in fighting this because natural gas appliances are slightly less expensive to put in in the first place than electric. So their profit margins are higher if they put in methane furnaces as opposed to electric. Now, over time, are they cheaper? No. But they don't care about that because they, they're in and out. They build it and they're gone. They made their profit. But they don't care about that because they, they're in and out. They build it and they're gone. They made their profit. But the people who have to live there, the children who will grow up in a house that's burning gasoline. They may have been burning gasoline, methane on their stove at the child's face level for the rest of that child's life. Those are the people that pay for that.
So in the resolution about. New hookups, that doesn't come into effect until after the majority of those units will be underway. Regardless.
Comes into effect in.
2024.
18 months. No, 14 months, February of 2024, right?
I don't.
Isn't that it?
Sometime in 2024.
That's when our right of way, yeah.
And actually, we probably wouldn't, we're not gonna be, I don't know, this is a Justin question. How does that work when we're? Do we begin the negotiations around our right of way agreement with our friend, with what is no longer going to be a franchise? With Northwest Natural, just to try and make it transparent. Would that conversation begin before? Or how's that process going to work?
There's no requirement in the current franchise agreement that we renegotiate it. So there is no requirement. I believe, although we have not done this yet, I believe that when the franchise agreement expires, they then become. Subject to the right of way code.
Okay.
As it exists at that time.
Okay, so, so effectively the transition would be whatever that, the, the date that's at the end of the franchise agreement is. Which is the date none of us seem to be able to remember.
I can't recall off the top of my head, but I believe it.
Whatever it is in 2024.
24 rings a bell, but I've heard that date a couple of times, so it might not be the right one.
It is, is February 24.
February 24. And so we, we're under no obligation to renegotiate. I believe anecdotally that I've heard and, and witness, I haven't spoke with anybody about it, but I believe that. Part of what brought Eugene to this point was they had protracted negotiations with their gas provider to. Form a new franchise agreement and they failed to come to an agreement.
Correct, yeah. Okay, so. Now that I'm. Right back where I started. By February of 2024, I would expect that the majority of those agreements to build those 2,000 units are already in place. Such that they are not going to be substantially affected by this resolution.
I wouldn't necessarily say that. I would say that us passing this resolution sends a message and that the. Developers that choose to develop in the city of Milwaukee will take that into account. You saw. Force Waverly Greens to put the largest rooftop solar array in the city, in the state of Oregon on their roofs. All we did was pass a resolution saying, we are trying to hit this solar goal. We are trying to reduce. Greenhouse gases and they chose to do that. I think us passing this resolution does several things outside of. The actual dates and times and requirements. It sends a message that the city of Milwaukee is leading on this. That the city of Milwaukee is. Hoping and expecting. Developers that come to work here. That they will join us in our efforts to stop the worst. Effects of climate chaos. It's, I think it's a very powerful thing, just like our, our solar resolution was a very powerful thing.
I have a question. Is there a way that we can work with businesses here to make the. Work together so they feel like they have the proper input and feedback with their concerns?
Well, so again, it's the, the businesses that have concerns that are here. Have concerns because they were fed misinformation. They were told that we were going to come take their natural gas away. That was not true.
Okay.
So that's why they're here. That's why they've all been here. The businesses that are coming. By their very definition are not here. So any business that's choosing to move here isn't currently here.
Well, I'm talking about the folks that are here now, working with them.
Well, and we know that Eugene has separated business from residential and have, have found that business. They need more study and more conversation about commercial industrial than residential, and I think we do too.
Yeah, and, and I, you know, as far as industrial use, we, I think everyone recognizes that it's gonna be. A while before we can end the industrial use of methane. There's just certain processes that, that it is so much better for than anything you can do electrically.
So how do we put their mind at ease? That's my question. How do we put them at ease that we're not gonna, you know? The world's not gonna come to an end, for, for lack of a better term.
Well, I mean. One, one option is to do, I mean, I don't think we have a. A resolution we're ready to, any of us are ready to sign off on tonight, but. One way to re, well, is to rewrite this as a residential only. The new construction. As a residential only and will continue to study, you know, and, and not to say we won't do commercial industrial new construction. But that we acknowledge that it needs more study and conversation.
Well, and, and I apologize because I sort of dragged us toward this without finishing number two, so that's my fault. Yeah, so I don't. I didn't mean to do that to you guys. Do you want us to go back to number two?
Finish your conversation and we can always go back.
Okay. I mean, on, on this resolution, I, I, I definitely want to see what happens in Eugene. Because nobody has, nobody has really given a, a clear answer to what, what are the legal concerns? What is the legal exposure? You know?
Oh wait, are we talking two or three?
Well, this is number three that's up here right now.
Alright, I thought you said we're going back and then.
And everybody said just move to come, just go wherever. So this was where we were and we'd sort of bled over there.
So we're talking about number three?
I don't know. Do you want me to go back to number two?
That's all I want. I just wanna know where the conversation is. It can be wherever it wants to be. I just wanna know where it is.
Yeah.
So we're talking about three now?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I do very much want to see what's coming out of Eugene. And it's, I, I've heard promises about their support out there if there is a legal tangle. I, one of my primary responsibilities as a council member is the, the fiscal integrity of the city. And. Promises aren't good enough. I, I mean, I love Earth Justice. I, I think they do terrific work, but I don't have a contract with Earth Justice. To cover the city if we get sued and it's great to say that. Northwest Natural likes to threaten, but they won't do anything, but I don't see why an industry that is dying, that has a whole lot of money. Is going to not choose to sue if they see a reason to do so. So I, I have very real. Concerns about that legal exposure and this isn't about a lack of courage. It's about my fiscal responsibility to this community. At the end of the day and, and so long as I'm on this dais, that is a very real responsibility that I share. With everyone else up here. So I, I do take that seriously and I do want to see what Eugene has done around this. They have way more time under their belt looking at these questions. They've had far deeper conversations. And they have way more lawyers and a lot more experience tangling with Luba and other state agencies around. Building code and land use, land use issues than we ever, I hope, ever will. So their expertise is really valuable.
I, question actually. With that, with that said about the legal aspects. If this was to happen, if, if we, I mean, would there be ground for legal action if, if it went into effect on the day that they're? Because it says February 15, 2024. So if we don't renew that franchise, do we even, can they still sue?
Well, anybody, I can sue you because you're wearing a blue suit jacket.
Something to stand on though. I mean, it's different when you're in the middle and during that franchise and that contract, but I mean, if we.
I mean, good Justin question.
At the point, this isn't an ordinance, right? Nothing we're talking about here is an ordinance at the point, but they do. Would call on us to do an ordinance at some point in the future and at that point, that can be referred to the ballot, correct?
Certainly, and on many of these questions, I'm gonna decline to give you legal advice on the dais for attorney client privilege purposes. But yes, you're correct. If there's an ordinance passed, they have the ability under state statute to end our charter to refer that to the voters.
Right, but that's different from a, being sued, right? I mean, that's a whole different aspect. I mean. Obviously, I don't want to be sued either. But I'm just trying to figure, I guess that's a question for another time, figure out their legal grounds on, on if they even would have anything to stand on if they did it after the, after the fact that the contract was already expired. And then we made that decision. The other thing I'd just like to point out is that has to do with some of the misinformation. First off, as much as Northwest Natural wants to be a partner, it, it would appear more so that you'd want to be a partner if, if there weren't. An aggressive attempt at surveys to undermine what we're trying to do or, or misinform people on what we're trying to do. It's not really a partnership. The other thing is that they're not immune to rate increases. There's also talk about how it's so much more cheaper. Well. We're looking at a 25% increase between now and next spring through Northwest Natural. So let's not forget about that. People's gas bills are also going to go up. So I don't want to sugarcoat and say, oh, well, gas is, 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 is cheaper and, and it's, it's, and obviously, yes, it, it is a little more cost effective currently. Comparing my personal electric bill to my gas bill. But it's not gonna be much cheaper for long. And then when you look at what the rate increases are going to, keep this in mind, talking about partnerships and, and. Climate change, well, none of the increase, none of the money, it doesn't seem like a, a lot of the money from the increases are even going to any of that stuff. You have apparently. 21.3 million. So just to give some people some facts on this, because I'm trying to fight back on this information stuff. Northwest asked for 82 million increases, Commission approved 62.7. You got 21.3 million to replace a gas main in Salem. So that's not anything for renewable. That's not for anything for climate. And then the second increase expected to generate 83 million is for the increased cost of methane gas. So it's, it's nothing towards development or, you know, cleaner energy or investments in that stuff in that regard. It's those rate increases are. Going towards this typical increases, right? So I just want to push on that and, and let people know that because again, they're not immune. To the same cost increases and rate increases and we're gonna face a pretty big one coming up between now and April. So I don't know how much. You know, I say that because again, the misinformation about that needs to be pushed back on.
And while we're at it. The Public Utilities Commission, which is the body at the state level they're appointed. They are the ones who ultimately approve the rates that we pay because we have an investor owned utilities here in the state. So they have to be reviewed before they can charge the amount they're going to charge. And they just got pretty harsh with Northwest Natural and. Denied a bunch of additional increases that Northwest Natural was attempting to get. Because they were judged to be inappropriate expenses for rate pairs to pay.
Could have been higher.
It could have been higher and thank you.
Aiming at 45%.
Right, they were aiming at 45% thanks to Citizens Utility Board, Climate Solutions was actually part of fighting that. But when I'm talking about us moving faster than our community is ready. These are the stories that our community doesn't know and. God bless everyone who's watching right now, but it's not 21,000 residents, you know? And I, I think they deserve to know and I think they have a right to know. And be a part of and feel like they're a part of this conversation we're having around these issues. I respect their intelligence.
And had I not brought these resolutions, would we be having these conversations at all? Probably not.
I, I also think people should know the difference between a resolution and an ordinance.
Yes.
I don't think enough people know the difference between the two, so.
These resolutions are basically conceptual directions to staff to start moving in a particular direction. That's for some point in the future. That is what these resolutions do. They set the tone for next steps. Nothing about these resolutions actually causes. Make sure. It doesn't cause an ordinance. An ordinance would be a next step.
I'm getting a little off topic here, but. Since there's a fairly good chance you will be in the legislature next year, I do think. These things are, these building code type things are better regulated at the state level. And I hope that, and I will be there, I will be happy to testify whether I'm still elected office or not. In support of a statewide. Statute that allow, either sets a timeline for. No new connections or allows cities to do that. Because I think the, the state could, state law could make clear that cities have this, could take away the legal liability that we. Are worried about facing.
We have the legal authority to do what we're talking about. It exists in statute today. Might there be something that they could pass that makes it even. Give them even less feet to stand on in a lawsuit potentially? But. We have the right to regulate our right of way. Period. End of story. End of story. That's all, that's all the rights we need. And. And frankly, the state can pass a law that says. Any city is allowed to ban any new natural gas infrastructure and Northwest Natural could still sue you when you did it.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
But you're right. This is better handled at a state level. What is going to happen? If some legislature should bring forward a bill that does essentially. This. Is that Northwest Natural will come and say, nobody even wants this. Who's even asking for this? Who's even asking? Why are you doing this? Right? This is part of the reason that cities all over this country are doing what I'm suggesting that we do. Is because we need to send that message to the state level and to the federal level. That the, the cities that are actively attempting to. Forstall the worst effects of climate chaos. Need help and they need changes at state and federal levels. Shy of doing at least resolutions, if not. Eventually ordinances, there is no message being sent.
Well, couldn't you do a resolution that was a resolution. Directing the state to address this problem?
Calling on the state to, yeah, we, we do that, we've done that plenty of times, calling on the legislature to address some issue.
And pointing out that their failure to act and to clarify this issue. Is impinging upon our ability to fulfill our climate action plan. And that cities are the source of 70% of the emissions throughout the globe and cities are. Trying desperately to be leaders on this and we need support from the state in order to do this work.
Absolutely, and that would be a good resolution for. The next council to bring.
Okay, well.
So. Do we have any directions to staff? On these three resolutions besides the ones they already suggested for the city buildings? That would. Make people more comfortable with the resolution.
With the city buildings? I, I mean, I'm good with what staff is.
Yeah, so city building is one we're all good. Yeah. So the city building is one we're all good. Okay. The second one, the...
We only act by whatever's up on the slide. You have complete control over our conversation.
Two buttons. So I did not have the sense that you have the votes for this one. I mean, maybe there's a version that could get you there, I don't know. I do think, I will say, and I may be the outlier here, on number three, I think there's a version of that I would...
Can we stick to number two?
Okay.
Because we keep moving off of it.
Yeah. I just think there are too many. And the other good point about trying to, you know, do more public education, build to a community conversation maybe next summer, is then those gas increases will have hit people in the spring. And we can point that out when it comes in their bill. We can do inserts, you know, that's, that's a tool we don't use very often, but we have utility bill inserts, and we can bring that to people's attention.
No, we never get any, we don't get our bills. They're all, a lot of people are on auto pay, so we don't see anything.
Did learn you will see a PDF version of the insert on your email in the bill if you get an electronic bill.
That's assuming that your spouse ever tells you.
So I'm going to read the resolu, the end of the resolution. Beginning of the resolution is the same on all three, setting the stage. Here's why we need to do these things. This is the resolution. This is, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Milwaukee, that the City of Milwaukee recognizes the global and local benefits of decarbonizing homes and buildings and accelerating the transition to all electric homes and buildings throughout the city. Any issues with that phrase? I am on RS fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. Okay, thank you.
I, I mean, I don't, I don't think any of my quibbles are with your language here. I just, I share the concern about that we need to have laid more groundwork with the residents because this is being read to, read as...
But so, so I guess what I'm asking is, when I read this, please listen to what it's actually saying.
Well...
Not read anything into it. Do not imagine some further thing. Listen to the language as I'm actually speaking it or as you choose to read it. Because that's the point. So on that first phrase, are there any issues with what that says?
No.
Okay. Further resolved as follows. Resolution electrifying, electrify existing homes and buildings. Section one, the city manager and staff are directed to include efforts to decarbonize existing homes and buildings over times, over time, as a priority in any future climate action plan updates. Such efforts shall include attempts to educate home and building owners about the benefits of decarbonizing buildings, including new high-efficiency electric appliances, as well as any federal, state, and local incentives and resources to finance such decarbonization efforts. Are there any issues with that? Section two, direct city manager to return to council with a proposal for engaging the community in developing a plan for decarbonizing buildings that has at its foundation social, environmental, and economic equity with emphasis on engagement historically marginalized communities and their representatives. Do we have an issue with that phrase?
So I do have a concern about the collective weight of this and looking at a priority. You know, this, it fits into two small paragraphs. This represents an enormous amount of work, potentially. So when we talk about it being a priority, and we talk about returning with a proposal for engaging the community and developing a plan, all of that, even the conversation we just had, and my impassioned plea that we include the community more, all of that stuff, that's all a lot of work. I want to be sure that we are not displacing what we recently had a presentation about, which is getting to a place where we have a one-hundred percent clean electric product that Milwaukee residents have coming to their house. I did not say that well at all. But to me, that's almost, they go together because as we're trying to electrify our buildings, we also need to clean up the electricity that is powering our buildings. So I don't want this to swamp, take precedence, displace that work.
Well, and that was kind of the point I tried to make at the beginning, is when we have this climate fund, when we vote on that, I do think there's probably some prioritizing of the work of the climate action plan that needs to go along with that, right? And maybe we would do exactly this, but I think we're putting this card in front of the horse. Yeah.
Using the funds to do this.
So when is our next climate action plan update?
Getting it to you by the end of the year, but it's not developing new actions or strategies. It's pretty much what we established was, I'm just going to be reporting out on what programs folks have seen and kind of how that played and resulted in their community. It's not, the emphasis is not on, on coming up with new actions.
It's just a report out. That's not actually a new update to the climate action plan?
Well, we'll be updating, showing, for example, some strategies staff, when prioritizing, determined it wasn't worth the investment of time, like a, you know, commercial building audit program, similar, or scoring program, similarly, similar to Portland's. We just, it's called for directly in our climate action plan, but when we look at it, it's just not a best use of our dollars. There are new programs that align with existing goals. Some of our strategies in our climate action plan are things like work with PGE to reach, you know, our twenty thirty goal, or work with even the gas utility to reach our twenty thirty-five goal. Or, you know, also electrify homes is another one in there. And some of these things, we have new learnings and programs that are not called out explicitly in the climate action plan that we can call out in this update. But without, you know, I think the conversation we had around, I think we actually had this with the climate emergency declaration, was that the investment on doing an update, the same scale as what we did with the development of the climate action plan, was just too great, and we didn't have the revenue for it. So what we're going to be doing is just sharing out learnings that we've kind of had in programs that have organically come out in the community. And I will say, too, you know, a lot of staff prioritization when we're looking at programs is what has the biggest emission reductions. And when we're looking in Milwaukee, buildings used to be number one until we started having a lot more emission reductions programs with PGE, with decarbonizing our grid. And that actually, I think, resulted in, we saw a decrease with our most recent greenhouse gas emissions inventory. So that's just to say that programming does work, but, you know, I don't, it's up to you whether or not it should be called out explicitly. I think that we've been kind of nudging and touching on the fact that there's engagement that needs to happen with program development. And I think that does happen because each program we need to bring will have to go to council. And, you know, with Home Energy Score, just think back on that with how much engagement had to go in even just to get that program lifted. So, you know, there will be opportunities for community feedback and engagement. And actually, even for our climate fund conversation on the fifteenth, we have that survey out, which is supposed to help us understand what programs who people want and what will they take advantage of. So that's not to influence decision, yes or no on this, but it is to say that the work is happening. And some, I mean, it's whether or not the political value of having that resolution flushed out is beneficial.
If I'm being totally transparent, I, I would rather, and it is difficult, I appreciate that these conversations are separate. I think it's appropriate. Let me preface what I'm about to say with that. The climate fund, I think, is a critical piece. It is another place where I feel like we're moving too fast and leaving the community behind. If I had my druthers, we would keep climate change as a goal for at least through October, September, somewhere in there, when we would likely have to have space on the schedule, assuming that the funding comes through for the Kellogg Dam removal, that goal would shift at that point over to Kellogg Dam. If I were, if I were a council of one, that, I think, sends the message to the community that this continues to be crucially important, and that it is something that we want the community's full attention on and engagement with, and buys us some time to have a fuller, more robust conversation about why are we, why do we want to add this fee to your bill? What does it mean? What is it going to get you as a community? What is it that our concerns are around buildings and building emissions? Why, why do we think it's important to not use natural gas to address the rampant misinformation that our residents have been subjected to? So now I've just completely thrown everything off for all that I was insisting that we should go back to talking about number two. But I wanted to provide that context for my earlier comments. I actually, you know, I love a lot about existing buildings and about this resolution. And I understand where the mayor is coming from. And yes, the language of it doesn't give me any sort of heartburn. What gives me heartburn is how it is being perceived by the community and the feeling that they are being left behind in this decision-making process.
When you say the community, what do you mean?
Residents of Milwaukee?
Every single one of them? Seventy percent of them? Fifty percent of them? Twenty percent of them?
I don't think about it in percentages. I, that's not, this isn't a vote. It's about the community sense. You know, I know we have community support for what is a substantial fee that is paid on every monthly bill or safe program. And that is a result of back-and-forth conversations with the community. And, and this, the sense that I have that it came from the community, and the city helped lead and guide that conversation to get to the place where we had this end product, and people knew what they were getting for the fee that was on their bill because they had had the opportunity to participate. I don't know what the...
The council kicked off a process for that to happen.
And they kicked it off in part because they heard from the community that this was something the community wanted.
Have not heard from the community that they want a climate, that want climate action?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue this way with you, Mark.
Well, you're, you're saying things, and I'm trying to understand what you're saying because you're saying that the community is not with us. And I would disagree with that assertion. I would say the majority of the community is with us. Yes, there are individuals, there are probably many individuals. And as Northwest Natural continues to push out their push-pull, there will be more individuals that are confused. But I would still assert that the majority of the community is with us. The majority of the community is very happy that they're in a city that has the kind of climate action plan that we have.
Absolutely.
And the majority of the community would like to see us actually enact that climate plan, not just have a pretty plan that we can
Yes.
talk about, but one that actually starts to reduce.
I agree with all of that, except I do not believe that the community understands the connection between a natural gas electrif, or between building electrification and disconnecting or ban on new connections for natural gas. Because they still believe that natural gas is a clean burning fuel. That is where the breakdown is. I do think we have support for our climate action plan. Absolutely. I don't know that it's a majority, but we do have support. And we have engagement, and we have people who are deeply invested in it. I'm one of them. But I don't believe that it is widespread knowledge that methane emissions are as deadly dangerous for our climate as they are. And that's the piece of the conversation that is missing. The part where natural gas is methane is missing. All of the, we've had excellent testimony around all of the horrible things about methane and about natural gas. All of that is true. The number of people in this community who understand those details around this, I think, is much smaller than I am comfortable with for making moves like this. Because at the level we're at, I think we are doing things that are breaking, that feel like they are breaking the relationship with our community.
So what you're saying is the community needs more education on that. So maybe we should pass a resolution that says such efforts shall include attempts to educate home and building owners about the benefits of decarbonizing buildings, including new high-efficiency electric appliances, as well as any federal, state, and local incentives and resources to finance such decarbonization efforts?
You're not listening.
I am listening. I'm not hearing a...
Yeah. So I'll, I'll say it one more time. It's, it's not the language of the resolution, it's what this is being perceived as by the community.
Again, by the majority of the community or by a small percentage of the community?
I think by the majority of the community. I think at this point, the majority of the community is real confused about natural gas and about why this is important. And they feel like their rights might be taken away. Because that's how this conversation has been framed. Not by us.
Yeah, I, I think in general, not just on this issue, but I think in general, there's a growing majority, just from the, the candidate forum, that seemed to be one of the biggest issues from the community was that the council's not listening. So I'm not just saying on this issue. I'm saying in general, I feel like there's, there's a disconnect, even from some of the people that have been, like I said, that have been typically, you know, that are all are supportive of what we're doing, they still feel that there's a little bit of a disconnect. That's, that's just from what I'm hearing. And I'm all for this stuff. I, I, I think, the importance of this can't be overstated. And I think everybody here has mentioned how important this stuff is. The city-owned buildings, I'm fine with. The new construction, obviously, I, you know, I'm fine with that, too. Obviously, with the commercial industrial, we have to figure that part out. With this one, I'm fine with as well. But the community seems to not be, for reasons that aren't in the resolution, for reasons that are actually not at the, not at the responsibility of any of us for causing it. But I think we need to go back to just, number one, easing their minds. And number two, if we're not, if this, if this isn't something that's going to be done until February of twenty twenty-four, then we have over a year to engage with the community.
I don't think this one has a date on it, does it? I think the, the third one is the one with the...
Can we go back to the...
The third one had a date originally.
Right.
Because that coincides with when our franchise agreement ends. The second one has no date. The first one has a new suggested date, but we may tweak that to just protect the two issues that we have and then board with that without a date. So as of now, the only one that has a date, that's sort of a delay, is the...
The city-owned, the third one.
This second one is just calling for literally what you guys... This second one is just calling for literally what you guys are suggesting we do. You're suggesting that we spend the time and effort to educate the people of Milwaukee around natural gas, nothing, and how we can potentially mitigate that. That is what you guys are suggesting we do. And that is literally what the resolution does.
I mean, it's, section one and two does make it general and broad by saying decarbonizing. It doesn't specify, which, you know, I think that's a good thing. It doesn't specifically say ban natural gas. It's, it's in general decarbonizing. And it, and obviously that's a big part of it, but still, I mean, that's-
I think, I mean, you're right. You're right. What it says in its language is not problematic. But it, we legislate against a context. And the context is what everybody's been talking about. I also think frankly, having this one adds to the pushback on the new buildings. I think if we drop this and we say, we're going to work on public education and we're going to talk, the next council will talk about this. You know, uh, I think that creates far less, that just lowers the anxiety of the community. And most people in this community don't care if we say, new construction can't build, can't put in gas. I have yet to talk to any resident who cares about that. I mean, they're like, oh, as long as you're not making me, you know, change the furnace I just bought. I think it lowers the anxiety all around to take this one off the table. This says existing buildings and just focus on new construction.
So in a logical world, you would be absolutely right. But I guarantee you that the messaging that will come out of Northwest Natural over the next year is that we are banning all natural gas from all buildings everywhere in the city of Milwaukee forever.
Well, and so that's where we have to use the pilot. We have to use our social media. We have to use our tools.
With or without this resolution, that's what's coming. With or without this resolution, that is what people will be told. That's what they're being told today. That's what they're going to continue to be told. Because you guys, I mean, hearken back forty-five years. Right? When Congress was considering climate change for the first time. And they were sitting down with the oil companies to talk about, how do we begin to address this? And promises were made and nice things were said. And we just need to delay a little bit so we can get this all, get our ducks in a row. And what did the nat, what did the gasoline companies do with that delay? They spent a lot of time and a lot of money lying to the American public. We are literally the only country on this planet where the vast majority of people don't believe in climate change and don't think that there should be, that we should be moving as fast as possible on it. Why? Because the fossil fuel industry has spent a fortune lying to this, to the people here. So it's now become this political thing. It's science. It's reality. The climate doesn't care what we think. The climate doesn't care how we feel. The climate does not care that we just bought a new furnace. It is moving inexorably in a direction that will be non-livable by the majority of people on this planet. And there is a very short window within which we have the opportunity to change that. That is reality. That is the physics of this situation. The faster everyone moves on everything, the more likely we are to survive it.
That's only if you bring people with you. I'm sorry, I just-
There's such a thing called leadership.
This is leadership, Mark.
This is leadership.
They're both leadership, Mark.
So-
Yeah, Northwest Natural will promulgate lies. It will be distressing. It will be ugly. They will outspend us. All of that is true. I also think we have laid some incredible groundwork in building community trust and community understanding around climate change and how serious it is because of the years of work staff and council have put into leading on that conversation. And again, I don't know, maybe I'm overly optimistic and apalliana about this, but I like to think that that matters. And I like to think that continuing to build on that good trust that we have, we've invested a lot of time and effort in. And talking to people in Milwaukee about why this is so important, instead of it just being in a council meeting, will get them there. And there is something incredibly powerful about creating a community that understands climate change. That has way more resilience than a council resolution we pass while everyone is upset and afraid and listening to lies and believing them. And then they get reactive, they lose trust in us. That's what I'm worried is at stake, is the relationship that city government and city staff have with this community. And that is a very valuable thing, and I want to be very careful with it. Because it has made all of the good work possible. And it makes the good work that we have yet to do possible. And if we break it, rebuilding that trust will take a very long time. And we do have important work that we need to do as fast as possible around climate. What I'm saying is, I think taking a few months to really get the community there with us as much as we possibly can, encountering the lies that they have been fed, is worth it in the long run. Because it honors that we are hearing uncomfortable discomfort, whatever, however you want to characterize it, from people in Milwaukee around what we're proposing. We're hearing that they don't understand. And we're saying, okay, we're going to take time to talk to you about this. We want you to understand. We want to know that you're okay with this. And that allows us to then, the next time we come up with some idea that seems wacky at first, to say, hey, we heard you last time. We had the conversation. How do you feel this time around? It's not a fifty plus one. This is, this is a, we do this together. Sorry, I'm a Quaker. We do, we do things by consensus. It is, I, I have to think about it that way. I have to think about, how many people are we bringing along with us?
If we, what, what would be? Cause I, I'm comparing this to what we're doing with parks, right? What would be the doubt? So since we talked about parks, we went in October and we met with every NDA and we did those presentations. What would be the downfall with approaching this in that same aspect? Cause we have a, we have a plan to get parks done by spring. What if we took the same approach with parks with this resolution? And we did our, our, we, we, we went out, just like we did with each of our respected NDAs. And that was one stage, and we can potentially have this resolution done by spring. And we won't have to wait till February or wait longer. Cause I guarantee you, they're, they're, I don't want to point, but they're going to work on-
Oh, yeah.
They're already doing it.
Oh, yeah.
Even if we, even if we had this passed, and I mean, you can, you can imagine there's going to be a ballot measure from them, most likely challenging, something's going to happen, right?
Sure.
I think the majority of our community is, is aware. And I, I think they are. But I think what I've seen, what I feel like is, is a concern is, is a lot of them, they're not against the natural gas ban. It's more of, how is it going to affect their pocket? Right? And it's, and I just think if we took the same approach as we did with parks and we really got candid with people and met them where they are, not just at NDA meetings, but, you know, there's so many other Milwaukee-based organization groups, the stewards groups, the, the, the Bike Milwaukee, I mean, we don't have to go to NDAs. We can go to all these-
Right.
Groups and, and, and the Milwaukee Bi-Park group as well. And, and do this, really get in, involved in it and have this thing potentially done around the same time that we're looking to do parks. I mean, I, why don't we take that same approach? Is there a downside?
Well, I would say, I mean, drawing on the example of the SAFE project, it'd be better to build it into the summertime because a lot of what happened with the SAFE project was at the farmer's market. Was having booths at the farmer's market that talked to people about that. And I know Natalie has gone to the farmer's market a few times on climate, different climate stuff, but we haven't gone on this at all. And of course, the farmer's market's now over. So I mean, I think, I'm not saying don't go to NDAs, but I'm saying the way you reach a broader, the NDAs are, you know, a finite group of people. The way you reach a broader group of people is the pilot? On the farmer's market, a town hall?
Town halls. I mean, I, I, I just think that there's a lot that we can do in a short amount of time to do outreach that really quell a lot of these concerns. Cause I don't think these are concerns that we need a year and a half to address. I, I think they're concerns that if, that especially with this community, I want to give a lot of credit to this community. This is something where when you sit down and you explain to them, the majority of them are going to go, oh, okay, sure. But I think right now, because they're feeling in the dark on other things in the past, this is just compounding that frustration.
Okay, sorry, just real fast before we go on. I just wanted to address the fact we're talking about a significant amount of staff work. It's great. I think it is, this is not a negative, so this is not me trying to dissuade you from it. I just want to make sure that at some point, if this is the direction we want to go, we give Natalie and Peter a chance to weigh in on what the, the staff capacity would be on it.
And that was kind of why I was suggesting more of the parks. Cause it gave, we took a large-
You all took a huge role.
Right. And, and it'll also give the new council time to get in on this and participate as well and use the resources that they bring to the table to address this too.
Right. I totally agree. I will say that Peter and I have actually done a significant amount of work in getting us to the point where you all were able to do that. So I just, again, I think it's the right thing to do. So in terms of engagement's always the right thing. Whatever that is, we're in for those discussions and, and we're here to help. I just don't know how much work it is. So I want to be fair to her. Thanks.
Absolutely.
And that's kind of where my, my, not, not directly related to all of these conversations, but indirectly, directly. Anyway, that was where my comment about continuing to have climate changes, addressing climate change as a goal came from, is that's, that's how we focus. That's how we have big conversations. That's why we made parks a goal. So for whatever that's worth, it's, and that is a decision that is ultimately up to the next council. Absolutely. But we can lay the groundwork and explain why that would be fair.
And, and I do think in the process, we involve climate solutions. We involve Electrify Now. We involve these organizations. Because, you know, I, I'm, you know, I'm somebody that doesn't know a vast major, a vast knowledge about a lot of, you know, consequences, right? I, I, I see what's happening and I, I understand the consequences, but not how we're getting there and, and the metrics and the measurements. And, you know, I, you know, a general public person isn't going to really know that either. And having those organizations, those reputable organizations, I feel like that's how you fight fire with fire when it comes to Northwest Natural, you know, and coloring books and things like that, so.
The challenge is Northwest Natural is a reputable organization in the eyes of most people.
They are. However, within our community, I think we have the upper hand. I, I, I think, I truly believe that this community, and it, for, for the most part, supports what we're trying to do, understands that we're, we're, we're doing it for the right reasons. And if given the opportunity, would probably take our word over theirs.
And well, I think another piece that I think is missing here is that, I mean, we've come at this from climate, because climate is our goal. But what I've learned in this process is the health impacts. And I am literally, I have ordered a induction burner. And I am literally, I mean, what I read about stoves leaking methane in your house, even when you're not using them, has me really worried. I asked Northwest Natural to come, um, meter, bring somebody, send somebody with a meter, measure my house. Didn't do that. They have a guy who comes out and tells you if you smell, you know, that, they're commercials. The, if it smells like rotten eggs, get out. But obviously, if there's these micro leaking, you're not getting that smell. I am actually looking right now to hire someone to come with a proper meter and compare the air outside my house and the air inside my house. And, um, because, but I do think Northwest Natural should be supplying that service to people. I mean, if they're really concerned about their, the safety, if they're convinced their product is safe, they should be, uh, supplying that service to people. And I do think a lot of people in this community don't know the health impacts of those stoves and other units. So I do think there's, um, that piece to educate on as well as the climate piece.
I don't even think some of the contractors know. Because when, when the contractor came to do a gas line stove for, for my house a couple of years ago, they showed up in the morning and I stopped them and I was like, hey, have you heard anything about the increase of asthma? Cause we're about to have a kid. And they're like, we haven't heard anything about that. So, you know, obviously I didn't put, go ahead with the gas line. But I, I, I think, I think there's contractors that don't even, are, are aware of that.
Yeah. And there's, I mean, we have a number of pipe fitter union members in town. I've talked to some of them. And they're concerned about their jobs. And that's, that's a concern that I think we should respect. And this is part of that conversation is saying, okay, so there's, there is significant health impacts. There's a role you can play in helping us address that in terms of, you know, where is the industry around identifying micro leaks in homes? That is a place where perhaps the pipe fitters do have a lucrative role to play. So there's, uh, yeah. But I, I do feel like, uh, the parks analogy is a good one. Because each of us, we've all been educated extensively on this topic at this point. We have stories like the one that Lisa just told about why this is important to us. We should be the ones out in the community talking about this. And this is a politically charged topic. So I, I do think that it's a, a role council should play. We've been going for almost three hours. Which is fine, and you all can keep going. But I would recommend, if we're going to keep going, you've got two things. One is, we all probably need a break, even if it's just five minutes. If you're thinking that this is going to be done in the next fifteen, great. At ten o'clock, we do have to extend the meeting. So that's all I wanted to say.
So what I'm generally hearing is that if we bring one and three back, that I have three votes, at least. Do I have more than three votes for one or three?
For one?
One is good, yeah.
One's, I have potentially unanimous for one.
Three, I want to know what Eugene does.
But, so I should bring back one and three? And you all would like me to hold off on two and?
Well, I would say there's a version of three that I would support, but I do think it needs to be restructured. And I do think it needs to be timed to allow us to see a little bit about what happens with Eugene. So I would say, yeah.
Longer than fourteen months?
No, no, no.
December, so let's see what's the- Cause Eugene is in November fifteenth. Yeah.
That's when Eugene is-
Yeah. That's when it'll be on their dais. And that's when Eugene is having their presentation. They're on the same schedule as we are.
So, sure, but I actually, I'm okay with the language there.
Okay, so bring back one and three. And I suppose thoughts on?
Just on date. One and three, sorry, on November fifteenth or on December, whatever that first meeting is.
December sixth.
December sixth.
Okay, thanks.
And then thoughts on how, how much or how staff is, has the capacity to do education around getting to number two?
And that will be a part of our November fifteenth conversation on Climate Fund. So I can bring to you-
Oh, is that on November fifteenth?
Mm-hmm, that's, that's in a couple of weeks. And we'll be essentially talking about what programs could be offered. What, I know, I know, like, for example, an energy fair, how that might be supported through Climate Fund, stuff like- What, I know, I know, like, for example, an energy fair, how that might be supported through Climate Fund, stuff like that.
All righty then.
And the business is too, right? The outreach part that's gonna be-
Oh, yeah, yeah. I would say this is, number three is residential only.
As long as residential, so there is confusion around, is an apartment complex residential or commercial?
Oh, cause we do multi-mix juice?
Yeah, and that's why, well, no, because of, there's, it's complicated. That's why I wanna hear what Eugene does, because they've, they've had a lot of discussion around how to parse that. And some of it has to do with construction methods. Anyway, we don't need to get into it.
Actually, a little bit, we need to get into it. Sorry, if, uh, just for the resolution, if you want us to come back, are we? Do you want us to bring back definitions? Do you want us to bring back what we see on the fifteenth from Eugene? So just so that we can be successful on the first meeting in December, what content are you looking for?
I, I would love to hear some, you know, your thoughts about what happens in Eugene and some reflection on the dis- the different distinctions that they're making between different building types and how they got there, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, we could do that and we can Milwaukee-ify a resolution that's similar and bring it for your consideration.
All right. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second. What?
Pass one tonight. We passed one tonight.
Nothing's written.
It's, yeah, it's not written yet.
Oh, yeah, that's okay.
That's why, that was the whole reason I said we have to delay is because they have some tweaks to it.
Yeah. We'll bring you the tweaked version.
So I think I heard a second. Yeah?
I seconded it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.